Good evening. I'm going to call to order tonight's special meeting of Talon Town Council, April 23rd, 2024. We're going to start by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Item number four on our agenda includes several proclamations. I'm going to read the first two. So the first one is a proclamation on Earth Day, whereas on April 22nd, 1970, millions of Americans came together to celebrate the first Earth Day. Residents from all walks of life advocated that their fellow Americans identify, discuss, and address environmental issues and called for action today for a better Whereas we commemorate the 54th Earth Day this year, we take time to face the challenges that we continue to face locally, nationally, and globally, and face those challenges with a spirit of connection to each other as well as the Earth and shared responsibility for its future. And whereas Talon has taken efforts towards addressing environmental issues and improving our natural spaces when trails blaze throughout the community and more underway, address forests welcome to alternative energy resources with solar and geocaching. And whereas we know our work is not yet finished and must continue to protect our natural protected spaces, redefine how we manage refuse and recycling and work creatively to make our community more energy independent. Now therefore, I, Katie Stargarter, Chair of the Talon Town Council, on behalf of the Town Council and community at large, recognize April 22nd as Earth Day and encourage residents across the community to engage in educational awareness programs, take part or organize a community cleanup event, or discover and celebrate Talon's natural spaces so that our community's legacy of stewardship will preserve for future generations, dated at Talon, Connecticut, this 25th day of April, 2024. We also have a proclamation on International Firefighters' Day, whereas firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property, and sometimes that dedication is in the form of countless hours volunteered over many years. In others, it might, it is, excuse me, in others, it is many selfless years working in the industry. In all cases, it risks the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life. And whereas International Firefighters' Day is a time where the community can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their communities and environment are as safe as possible, it is also a day in which current and past firefighters can be thanked for their contributions. And whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on the 4th of May on where we remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community or dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of us all, and show our support and appreciation to the firefighters worldwide who continue to protect us so well throughout the year. And whereas hailing from all walks of life, they are our mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends. They protect us without wanting of recognition or reward. In our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. They are the essence of the true meaning of community. Now therefore, I, Katie Stargarter, Chair of the Talon Town Council, on behalf of the Town Council and community at large, now call upon citizens of the town of Talon and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the day of May 4th, 2024, in recognition of the patriotic service and dedication efforts of our fire and emergency services personnel, dated at Talon, Connecticut, this 25th day of April, 2024. We also have three proclamations included in tonight's packet honoring three young people in our community who have achieved their Eagle Scout. All right. So the next item on our agenda is item five, public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the Town Council with a two-minute limit. We do go back and forth between the room and the virtual room for this, and I would just remind everyone that we do have a public hearing in which we will also be hearing public comment. So if anyone is here and wishes to speak on the application for the 2024 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, that's the next item on our agenda, and you can hold your comments to that public hearing if you wish. So again, if anyone in the room would like to speak, if you are able, if you could come up to the table, if you can't, just speak as loud as you can, give us your name and address, and we will go back and forth between the in-person room and the virtual room. So we'll start here. If there's anyone who'd like to speak, go ahead.
Sean Laffin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. Hello, Town Council. I was very brief in my last meeting, but I wanted to update the council on the progress at my property. I have had a site visit with multiple interested parties that included the town, the well driller, East Newton Highlands Health District, and Langdon Engineers. And we now have a date to begin the drilling and installation of a new well on my property, May 6th, 2024. While I'm happy that we are taking steps to address this contamination issue on my property, I do want to point out another problem that came up because of the large drill rig and other heavy equipment that will be needed on my property to install this new well. I have to disconnect internet and electricity from my house because the overlying lines are in the way of this work. The estimated time, amount of time needed to complete this work is one to two weeks. I am no longer actively living at 168 Mountain Spring Road full-time, so this might not seem like a minor, a major inconvenience, but I also cannot use my property, which means I cannot rent it out, as I had planned to do. As a landlord, I know that if I had to provide a habitable living environment for my tenants, I'd be responsible for finding them suitable accommodations at my own expense. And looking at hotels around the area, this equates to probably around $100 a night. I'm having to delay my plans of renting out the house by at least two weeks, if not longer. This is just another example of how I'm being negatively impacted by this contaminated water outside of the typical things such as degraded internal plumbing, my inability to sell my home, et cetera. As always, I will be documenting my loss, so this can be addressed at a later point in time. My hope is that this new well will produce potable water, but since we have been down this road about two years ago with the town, I await this result with bated breath. Thanks.
Thank you. Online, we have Amir.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Amir. Amir Rosenbaum. I'm over at 1712 Park Boulevard. How's it everyone doing tonight? I hope everyone's having a wonderful evening. I would just like to talk a little bit and ask the city to pass a resolution against genocide.
Next.
Okay. In the room? Come on up.
There's no, there's no Park Boulevard that we know of, correct?
No, we're not a city council leader, so.
Sammy Khan, 61 Farm Brook Drive, Talon, Connecticut. My reason to be here for the safety, safety of Talon residents. The two of you, Chris and Jennifer, they are part of the court system. My question to you is, how long does it take for a resguard to be issued? One day, one week, one month, one year? I think you should pretty much have, some kind of sort of idea. Yes?
But this isn't, this isn't back and forth.
I just want to make sure that I'm not misleading people and misleading the Town Council. Within the three months, I, I own a small business in Talon for 20, 20 years. Within the last three months, there were two accidents happened at my property. One was a lobby, as everybody knows it, and Ryan was involved in that. Second one about a meter long, five feet of, I'm sorry, on 24th. One of my employees, Richard Thurston, he worked about two and a half years with me, came in about 1:30 in the night, opened the door, opened the safe, and cleaned it up and walked away, and leave the door open. So I waited for about three hours to do my own investigation. Went to TPC, middle of the wood. And ever since then, it's like I'm waiting for a resguard. And even though within two days, I told them, I said, is it a half hour? No, we cannot, because we don't have a resguard. So like, is there some kind of justice to the community? Is there some kind of TPC is doing anything? Do they have responsibility or they don't give a, about any, anything of what's going on? I just don't know, don't tell, honestly, TPC has it? Like, what's going on? That's what I like to find out. Besides the Board of Education, it's like, this is my, this is my priority, and this is the priority should be for every single person over here. And I think Mr. Foley, to you, was like, about a year ago, and I thought that you had some guts, and that was the reason that I voted in your favor, that I said, you know what, maybe you can put everything together, that's under control. I think you're doing a fine job, but that department is out of hand, and because they can't, they don't answer anyone, not, not the town manager, not the town council. So why the heck we are paying about $1.2 million to TPC? I think it's cheaper, cheaper thing is to like, you know what, buy a garden, give your residents, they can protect themselves. And whatever the money left over, you can give it to Board of Education, and so they will be able to stop going. That's, that's, I honestly, like, I don't, I know I'm wasting my time here, but I'd like to take my grievation out for someone and try to get an answer. If there's a answer out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Not on the vote list, just so you know, so I might be asked for the address.
Sure.
Right away.
Sure. Brent and Karen?
Yes, hello, City Council. How are you doing? Oh, my address is 30
City Council, he's not here.
Hi there. I meant, I meant 37 Dunn Road.
Okay.
Okay. Well, City Council, I would like to just speak on the amount of anti-white violence that I'm seeing in our community.
In the room.
In the room. Someone's standing, I'm sorry. There's time for everyone, so please, we'll get to everyone.
Good evening. Susan Lusa Cues, 95 Talon Green. Not pleasant, not comfortable, not looking forward to doing this, but I am here tonight to speak in favor and support of the removal of the two members of the Historic District Commission that is on your agenda tonight. I can speak firsthand about the behavior that has been cited, that I have previously shared in letters to the council, and which is also readily available to listen to in their meetings and meeting recordings. The last meeting on April 17th contains invaluable legal guidance, which in turn points out many areas of misconduct that have been going on for a very long time. This negative culture has been built and perpetuated in the HDC over the years and simply needs to change. One thing I keep hearing is a concern about the precedent that this action set. I think this should set a precedent. That participation on any town-sponsored commission or committee does have, does have some obligations. No one is perfect, but honesty, fairness, and an understanding of protocol and the scope of your authority and your role isn't that much to ask. I support the membership changes to the Historic District Commission recommended by the town manager, and I look forward to an HDC that can hopefully bring some positive changes to the historic center of this town and to the town as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go, is there anyone on the virtual meeting that would like to speak? You can raise your hand or press star nine. We'll go back to the room. There's time for everyone, so please.
Good evening, I'm the Town Council. My name is James Zimmer. I'm an attorney with Jacob's Walker Rice and Berry located at 146 Main Street in Manchester. I'm a legal counsel for Kathleen Bach, and I'm here to present two comments for the record. First, Agenda Items 8.6 and the draft resolution contained in Agenda Item 8.6 for the removal of Kathleen Bach, the member of the Historic District Commission, propose a public hearing, not a formal hearing, and therefore are legally defective. Section C 5 to subsection 3 of the Town Charter requires the Town Council to provide commission members, quote, "an opportunity to be heard at a formal hearing before the Town Council may remove them." A formal hearing is a due process hearing. Town Council, the Town Charter does not define formal hearing. The standard definition is this, is a due process hearing at which commissioners will have the right to present a full and fair opportunity to defend themselves against all alleged violations. A formal hearing is a due process hearing at which commissioners shall have the right to have an attorney present, to present evidence, call witnesses, to testify under oath, and examine, cross-examine those witnesses. Anything less than those provisions is a violation of the Town Charter and the client's due process rights. Second comment, at the April 9th, 2024 Town Council meeting, Town Manager Brian Foley stated that my firm had, quote unquote, falsely claimed that the Town Council discussions of removal of my client from the Historic District Commission should be held in executive session. This is a gross misrepresentation of the truth. The Connecticut Freedom of Information Act explicitly permits Town Councils, public agencies, or what the Town Council is willing, to have discussions, quote, "concerning the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer," unquote, in executive session. Mr. Foley's comments should be stricken, and the Town Manager should be reprimanded and required to apologize on the record for this remark and his lack of decorum. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback, but this is not the appropriate time for that. Is there anyone online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room? Please go ahead.
Hi. My first meeting. I have been Holly Linton, 21 Stevens Road, Talon, Connecticut, 06084. I have been living here 33 years with my family. How old my kids were growing. Yeah, I have that. I love this town, and I love the people in this town, and I just try to create positive, positive, positive environment. And I just want it to be a happy town. With that being said, this town's changed so much since we moved here. We moved here for the school system. I work in the school system. I work at Talon High, and I have been for about 10 years, give or take, and, you know, there's been a lot of changes and a lot of growth within the town, and it saddens me because I miss the old days. Yeah, I'm older, okay? But with that being said, one thing that I love is, and I drive by it every day, I know, I, I go right by the Talon Green every single day, sometimes more than once. Not a big fan of what happened with the streets, but that's okay. I'm surviving. I just, I'm just really concerned about the two people that are being taken out of, or want to be taken out of the, the committee because I don't know, what are we going to get? I mean, they have been working their butts off for years and are free, and they have facts, and there's legal legalities and legal knowledge, and I, I don't want to see too much more change in this town. I really don't. I just, it's like one place we can all go. Not, I like change. I'm, I'm, it's fine, but the green is just beautiful. And trust me, I'm a paraprofessional, and I'm very, very pro. Can't even think the words, I'm losing, I'm losing my mind, but I, I, I think, I think, I think we should all just try to deal with this on, on a positive, nice way instead of all this negativity. That's how I'm trying to live my life at, at this point. And I really don't want to see too much more change on the green. I love the green, although if we can put change on the green that won't affect the beauty of it and the historical facts and legalities of it all, that's okay. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone online who would like to get public comment at this time? You don't have to wait for me. At any point, you can raise your hand, I'll call you in order. All right, we'll go back to the room. Is there anyone else?
Can I sit down?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm kind of concerned that
Just give us your name and address.
Oh, okay.
Thank you so much.
Ken Upling, 19 Summerwood Bridge in Talon.
Thank you.
I was a vice president of the Historical Society in Wellington, where I lived for about a half a century, and there's no concrete sidewalk down that green. They have car meets and all kinds of things on it. And I just don't understand, apparently, this council is trying to vote out these two ladies who donated their time, one for 30 years, one for 15 years, apparently. And, and the complaints, who, who's complaining? What, what are the complaints? No one ever brings that up. And I play pickleball in town every Thursday, and about 20 people there, none of whom knew, they're all residents, 15,000 people. No one knew about this sidewalk deal. It seems like it's hush, hush. I don't get it. So it seems like because the two people that want to keep the green historic and so forth, that a couple people, and I guess there was 10 complaints a while ago, and I believe that the 10 complaints weren't from 10 people. Am I right? Some of them keep complaining, and out of 15,000 people in this town, to have you people make a decision like that is not democratic, it's not right. People go to Boy Scouts and learn things and go to church. It doesn't make any sense at all. People for free have donated their time, and because a couple people don't like their decisions, they want it their way. I just don't get it. And I wish I could get an explanation for that. Who is making this decision to try to get rid of two ladies? Who? Can anyone answer that?
Thank you. This isn't a back and forth, though. This is your time to talk, to speak with us.
No one's really, yes.
Thank you. Brent? I'm sorry, again, this is, this is a Town Council meeting. If you could please remain quiet in the audience, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Again, everybody will have a chance. I'm sorry to be now.
Making my way. Thank you. Bob Urbino, 296 Wyville. I will not be speaking about white violence or genocide tonight, City Council.
Appreciate it.
That was a moment of levity, just to, thank you. I will be speaking to Agenda Item 8.5, specifically my observations of the Historic District Commission's meetings regarding solar. And Madam Chair, your proclamation regarding Earth Day, I thought was very fitting. You should all be in receipt of this letter I'm about to read, but as the rest of the audience is outside of that, allow me the opportunity to be heard. I'm a supporter of a Historic District Commission, a commission that abides by its charge and Connecticut state statutes. We need a commission comprised of stewards of Talon's history, yet whose passion is tempered by a perspective, like it or not, recognizes progress, does not stand still. As with every other deliberative board and commission in Talon, we need a Historic District Commission that respects the applicants that come before them. It doesn't opine on the morality of renewable energy despite its protective status in Connecticut state statute. It doesn't belittle the applicant as to the value of their home as a way to determine or undermine the applicant's credibility with other commission members. It needs a chair that has an understanding and respect for Robert's rules of order and doesn't trample due process by presumptively asking the seated members for a nay vote when calling for a vote. These are all observations of the public record that anyone in this audience could look up in the recordings. We need a commission that understands that evolving statutes of renewables, specifically section 7-147F of the Connecticut state statute. And I quote, although I'll paraphrase, "No application for a certificate of appropriateness such as a solar energy system designed for the utilization of renewable resources shall be denied." Shall not be denied. I'm sorry, shall be denied. It cannot be denied unless, unless the commission and its deliberation finds a feature cannot be installed without substantially impairing, and this is why I should be wearing my glasses. Thank you. Substantially impairing the historic Substantially impairing the historic character and appearance of the district. Now, I appreciate that this is, we're about to get into some very gray subjectivity. But I expect that such a debate would be tempered by conceding the preponderance of other post-Victorian advancements. I'll enumerate, enjoyed by the Tolland Green residents such as God help us, above-ground electrical service, tri-tab asphalt shingles, asphalt roads, and indoor plumbing, just to name a few. I know, indoor plumbing maybe not so much, but having not had indoor plumbing, then perhaps outhouses would be coming under the peruse commission. Seven dash one four seven F concludes, "With a certificate of appropriateness, for such a feature may include stipulations requiring design modifications and limitations on the location of feature which do not significantly impair its effectiveness." And though the statute does not define significant impairment, the state of Nevada, for example, sets us at ten percent. As more than this would amount to a taking of the property owner's right. These rulings have economic impact to the owner. Beyond an appreciation of the final impact of the commission's subjective rulings on solar, I would hope we could have a Historic District Commission that is proactive. A commission that would establish a design guideline, for example, for renewables, nothing like that was been authored by Guilford's Historic Commission, rather than subjecting the applicant before them to an ad hoc collection of personal opinions. In light of this year's past performance, I have no conscience under its current leadership that Tolland's Historic Commission can function in accordance with its charge, state statute, or decorum consistent with faithful public service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room?
The whole house tonight. Yes, hello.
Hello.
Mary Pat Soucy, one 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 Tory Road, Town, Connecticut.
Just one second, yeah, I'm sorry, can we just please be quiet so we can listen to the person who's speaking? Thank you, please start.
So I'm, I'm disappointed to be here commenting again on the eight point five removal of the members of the Historic District Condition, Commission. It seems like the council is using the, uh, the third reason, uh, which says other reasons for boards, commissions giving notice. So it was C point five two, so it's, so the third bullet is for removal for other reasons that town council deems enough, provided that the member of such boarding commission is given notice and an opportunity to have a formal hearing. So, um, and two things jumped out at me, giving a notice, which I think the notice was the phone call from the town staff person that said, resign or else we're going to have a public hearing, which I think is unfair. Uh, and the second thing is the charter says the formal hearing, if, if the charter says formal hearing, not a public hearing. So, and then I looked at the resolution and it says significant and numerous complaints. And I, I actually just picked up my FOI packet today, but I had, um, reviewed it real quick and I saw that there was, there were many letters, maybe fourteen at the most, and there were a couple in favor of the two people that are being asked to be removed. Um, but four letters were from one person who had a vested interest in removal. Two letters were from another individual and the first letter asked the chairs to be educated. And two letters, and the second letter asked for removal, then six letters, that's six letters by two people. The other four letters that I had read quickly, uh, were from residents and one asked the chair to be trained in Robert's Rules. One was a general complaint about HTC, one asked for change in leadership and one asked for removal. So the letters that I read, so ten letters from six people. And I'm asking you all, leaders of the town council, is this fair? Would you want that this to happen to anybody else in this town? When I, I missed the budget meeting, but I looked at the Facebook and it was horrible. There were hundreds of complaints asking for people to be removed. And I really, it was a dark day for you guys and for the town, for everybody to be saying all that. So I'm really upset about this item only because it's so unfair. Because six people who have lent, but six people have led the town council to agree to a public hearing to remove two individuals that have been given this town a combination sixty years of service and their loyalty as well, and their taxpayer residents who have given their time and energy to the town of Tolland. And you guys have agreed to a public hearing and allowed their reputation to be smeared in public because someone has convinced you this is important. But as I say, and at the last meeting, I sat in this chair and said, I reminded you that you're setting a precedent, you're setting a precedent for all the people that volunteer in this town and have given hours, weeks, years. And I just really hope you don't agree to this, I really hope, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Okay, back to the room, is there anyone else in person who would like to speak?
Good evening, Dennis Deegan, six eighty-nine, Allen Stage Road. I guess I'll start by suggesting that you might want to have a microphone here for those that speak softly, so everyone else in here knows what's going on, okay? Uh, that being said, uh, one of the gentlemen, first of all, I took speech and drama in high school, but I'm not going to give you a theat presentation. The gentleman that asked about what's this all about, okay? I'm going to share some insight for that gentleman and everyone else in town, what's behind all this, okay? We have a couple of people up here who believe in authoritarianism. And when people don't decide to go along with what they want, they get rid of them. We have a person in the audience here tonight who's the chair of another commission who not only is upset with the fact that someone's telling her, no, she can't have what she wants, but she also wants two million, three million dollars more for her family to be happily resident residing in this town. Okay, so that's what's going on and it's about a change in balance of power of the commission, okay? So that they go to two, two players on the commission, put two on that they want, they get to say what they want to hear, okay? That's what it's all about, okay? That's the end of the statement. And the chair of this council has been after this, one of these people, if not both of them, from day one as liaison. Okay, plain and simple. If you go back and look at it all, there's not a day or a night that the chair of this council has actually supported that commission. So just so the town knows, so it's about the sidewalk, it's about the solar, it's about the sidewalk on the green, it's about replacing all the sidewalks downtown, okay, downtown Tolland, so that someone's child can ride a wheelchair around whenever they want to, okay? That's what this is all about, okay? Plain and simple. And quite honestly, if you're truly interested in the integrity, okay, of that commission and your true interest is because Robert's Rules isn't being done correctly, then you don't get rid of someone, okay? You go and you decide if there's somebody else there that can do a better job and you go to the commission and you say, hey, this is what's going on, doesn't it make sense? Okay, look for some collaboration, look for some conversation, that's not what's going on here, okay, at all, at all. It's really, really a sad day when you see this going on in this town after all these years because this is exactly what's going on in this country and you are all now part of it. Is that what you want to be? Do you want to be part of what's going on in this country, okay? To the negative, not to the democratic side, okay, small d, but to the other side. And that's what you're doing, okay? And then everyone in town gets to share and see what you're like, what you're really like when you take on this job. I wish you well, thank you.
Thank you. We have someone online, Deb Getz.
Yes, hi, Deb Getz, one seven six, Kate Lane. I just want for the record, I did a FOIA request, but I limited it to any emails specifically naming Kathy Bach in her role on the Historic District Commission. I was provided three emails from my FOIA request. Only one of the emails even had a complaint, that was from Jan Rubino. The others, she was just mentioned in passing, it was not a complaint, no one asked for her to be removed. So for this to say there have been numerous and significant complaints, you're going to have to back that up a little better. If someone has complained about the way a Historic District Commission meeting was operating, that's one thing, and I agree. I listen to the meetings, Zoom meetings are a disaster. But you cannot pin that on Kathy Bach. There are no complaints specifically except that one about Kathy Bach. So if you're going to try to remove her, you have to have specific evidence against her. One of the things mentioned in the resolution is, uh, missing meetings. In twenty twenty-three, she missed three meetings at the end of the year. But what the, what your town code says is unexcused missed meetings. Have you asked if she was excused? Did you ask if she made sure that there was an alternate who'd cover her absence? That's important. She's made one hundred percent of her meetings in twenty twenty-four. I think that's also important, perhaps there was something going on at the time in twenty twenty-three and you should look into that before you put in writing that you're accusing someone of something. I listened to all the meetings, I understand what some people are saying. Zoom meetings are a disaster, I was on PCC for four years, part of that time during COVID. They were a disaster, you can ask any of us. None of us liked it, we couldn't wait to get back in person. The Historic District Commission operates in a similar way to PCC, ZBA in making decisions based on applications. They're legal decisions that we're making that can be appealed in court. The meetings should be held in person, people should be sitting behind a desk just as you are with the audience on the other side. That's going to lead to a much smoother and professional attitude in the room and proceedings. You should have a clerk available for them to take the minutes, especially when it's a public hearing, as I said, those are appealable, the decisions. And you should have a staff person who can help with the muting and unmuting. The meetings are very hard to listen to because people are talking over each other. And people are jumping in when they shouldn't be speaking, the public should not be speaking at certain times during that meeting. If they had a staff person like we had David Corcoran, who did a wonderful job, you have people helping you. Katie's not the one muting and unmuting people. BOE, Tony's not the one muting and unmuting people. It shouldn't be up to Jody to have to be juggling so many things when she's trying to run a public hearing. Give her the support she needs, give the whole commission the support they need, and I'm sure you're going to see a much better process. Andy Powell, who'd be a great one to sit down with Jody and tell her how a meeting operates, what to do, when, the do's and don'ts of running a public hearing. He does an excellent job, but he reads to everyone from the beginning what's going to be expected of the public. And I think that's a part that's missing in the HTC. Everyone feels equal in those meetings, from what I've heard, listening to them. You need to have a separation, just as you do, between the council or the mission and the public who's speaking. And I really think that the town council could do a lot to help those meetings run more smoothly. And I don't think that requires removing people, especially without any just cause. Help them to run a better meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Jody Coleman, Marzielle.
Jody, I'm just, hold on one second, I just want to make sure you don't get interrupted, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jody Coleman, Marzielle, seventy-nine, Tolland Green, and I'm also chair of the Historic District Commission. I'm here today because regarding Agenda Item eight point five regarding my removal as chair of the Tolland Green Historic District Commission. I have been a resident of the Historic District for over twenty-five years and a member of the Historic District Commission for fifteen years. Sometimes we must make decisions that applicants find unfavorable, causing them to write complaint letters and post their aggression on social media. Some residents within the Historic District feel they should be allowed to do whatever they want with their property, disagreeing with the guidelines, laws, rules, and regulations that have been put in place on the town, state, and federal level. However, I cannot, just as a town cannot change a state law or a state cannot change a federal regulation. However, these guidelines have been put in place for very good reasons, to preserve and protect the distinct characteristics and appearance of our nationally registered Historic District as stated in the Tolland Green Historic District Commission's purpose, which defines our town and without it, what would we be? My decisions and meetings decorum aren't arbitrary, biased, disrespectful, or show a lack of impartiality. If this was so, why haven't I heard anything about it over my last fourteen years? I am fourteen years as commissioner, I have not violated any of the thirteen items listed A through M in my charge as outlined on the town website. And I feel the recent allegations are only based on personal feelings and opinions who are taking out their anger because they didn't or their friends didn't get their way. If anything, I have gone above and beyond to inform and educate myself by consulting with experts at the Connecticut Trust for Preservation, the State Historic Preservation Office, the Preservation CT on a regular basis. I have reached out to other towns with Historic Districts, including Manchester, Weathersfield, and Windsor recently, about the recent issues with solar going on. I have consulted with numerous historic architects, engineers, and attorneys, and most recently a solar company in an effort to understand the different types of panels and solar systems available today. To date, I have asked for more public information links, three, on March twenty-eighth, to be placed on our town webpage in addition to the fifteen we currently have. I requested a minute taker four times, starting back in March of twenty twenty-three, but I still don't have one. I suggested in November and December of twenty-three, a training or workshop for all volunteers on how to run a meeting, but I haven't heard a response. And I have asked multiple times for the ability to mute participants at our public hearings as well. We even tried to have our meetings hybrid, like the town council does and the planning and zoning does. But when we arrived, we were told, oh, just use your laptop and hop on the Zoom link. So we're definitely not being supported equally as everybody else is who has a public hearing. So at the end of the day, I feel my requests for assistance to the town have been ignored and my efforts to run proper and respectful meeting have not been supported by the town as a municipality. With so many vacancies and a lack of volunteers coming forward, it is a shame that the ones who are trying to do their job are being asked to resign based only on one's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Celeste on a show, nineteen Joe Sabbath Drive. I'm here to urge the council tonight to vote no on Agenda Items eight point five and eight point six. Is this how we treat our volunteers in town? And my other question is, is this how you would want to be treated? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online who would like to participate? Anyone else in the room?
Hi, my name's Jeanne Cordier, I'm a resident of fourteen Ossie Drive. I was, I'm here to support my friend and also to support the culture of our town. And rather than repeat everything that most of the people said already, I'm afraid that in our town, if we proceed with this type of hostility towards each other and undermining each other, we're not going to have a wonderful town to raise our children in. Now, I work in mental health. I've owned the Mental Health Center for 20 years. And I understand motivation. I understand emotions. And from what I gather, most of what's going on is based on mostly emotional decisions that lack any type of rationality. So I'm hoping that when you're all considering what to do with our commissioners or on our commission, that you think about what type of environment we want to develop here in town. Do we want an aggressive, cutthroat, passive-aggressive, demeaning environment? Or do we want to promote and support each other and our agendas? We can disagree and we can find common ground, but we can't do it at the expense of our integrity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in person? Okay. We will move on to Item 5. I'm sorry, Item 6, which is our public hearing item, which is the consideration of a resolution concerning an application for the 2024 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program.
All right. Um, thank you very much. We have a lot of staff and non-staff here to discuss this. Uh, the nuts and bolts of it is, um, we have Old Post Village around the corner that houses a lot of residents. Old Post Village is, um, I don't want to say in disrepair, but certainly in need of a lot of repairs. There is a grant application being brought to the town and the town is likely, or we're hoping to work together cooperatively with the management company that is, um, that is going to work with us through the grant process and make these repairs. Some of the repairs, uh, the roofs, making the apartments ADA accessible, parking lot repair, parking lot expansion, sidewalk repair. Um, it needs a lot of work. There's, there's tree removal, um, and it's time. And, and I hope that, uh, we will get this grant award. With it is our, first, our grants manager, uh, Megan Masa is here. And Megan, can you kind of run down what we're doing here today?
Yeah, so we are going to have a public hearing tonight that's going to discuss the Small Cities Block Grant Program, what's eligible and how that functions. We're going to talk about the scope of the project. Um, we have a small presentation. Um, and we have also, um, with us, we have, um, sorry, thank you. And we have, um, Beth Bellaty, um, our Human Services Director, and we have Kelly McDermott from, um, BHM, thank you. And Megan Burnett from Community Consulting is going to be helping us put together the grant, um, application paperwork. Um, and then we'll, after we do a little bit of a presentation, we'll have, um, some for the comment.
Good evening. I'm Rudy Fierl. I live in Talling, 92 Crystal Springs Drive. And I'm the chairman of Talling and the Chairman for the Talling Housing Authority. Also known as Old Post Village. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. I am here this evening in my capacity as Chair of the Board for the Talling Housing Authority to strongly recommend a town council apply for community development block grant funding on behalf of the Talling Housing Authority. As Brian mentioned, this funding is critical for the much-needed capital needs improvement projects at Old Post Village. As you are aware, THA is one of the two critical low-income housing complexes serving the community in Talling. Unfortunately, THA has not benefited from any significant capital improvements in over three decades. As a result, the infrastructure is in a state of decline and the facility is in dire need of repair. The lack of adequate resources for proper maintenance has led to a gradual deterioration of the property, which is not only becoming a nicer to the community, but also negatively impacts the quality of life for our residents. Our residents, who are our fellow citizenry, deserve safe and well-maintained housing. The current state of this repair causes unnecessary stress and anxiety. They worry about malfunctioning systems and the potential financial burden of repairs due to limited funding. By approving this application for CDVG funding, we can take collectively, we can take the first steps in addressing these concerns and provide our residents with peace of mind, knowing that we, as a community, are taking the necessary steps to assure that their homes will be properly cared for and at the same time maintain a positive and welcoming appearance of our town. Unlike HUD-funded housing communities such as Windy River, the Talling Housing Authority solely relies on resident rental revenues as its source of funding for maintenance and operations. This limited funding stream leaves us with little financial flexibility to allocate resources for capital outlay projects or build sufficient reserve funds. It is important to emphasize that THA, along with all housing authorities in Connecticut, does not receive financial support from the state or the town. Consequently, our ability to undertake capital improvement projects relies heavily on state or federal grants or a combination of both. By approving the application for CDVG funding, I feel like I'm doing the alphabet soup. Uh, you will not only improve the physical condition of Old Post Village, but also positively impact the mental and emotional well-being of our residents. And after Kelly's presentation, uh, you'll have the opportunity to hear some of the concerns and needs from our residents. A CDVG grant will allow us to provide a safer, more comfortable living environment, reducing, reducing the anxiety associated with uncertain living conditions. Given the urgent situation at Old Post Village, I respectfully urge you to approve the application for CDVG funding for these essential improvements. Your support will not only benefit the residents of OPV, but also demonstrate a commitment to enhancing the overall well-being and resilience of our community in Talling. I thank you for your attention to this matter, and I look forward to your favorable response. Please do not hesitate to contact me if you require any additional information or if there is any other way I can assist in facilitating this process. I respectfully submit this recommendation for the record, and I thank you for listening to me this evening.
Thank you. Did you want to run about the funding source or you want me to run through the project?
We can go right to the project. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for having us. My name is Kelly McDermott. I'm the President and CEO of Elderly Housing Management. Uh, we are the company that oversees daily operations at the site and also I have some responsibility towards capital repairs and work orders that come in. Um, I joined Elderly Housing Management, uh, in March of 2023. In my prior life before that, I was a Public Housing Authority Director for most of my career. So when I came to visit Talling specifically, I was very familiar with the type of property Old Post Village is and, um, the current physical condition that that site is in. Uh, Old Post Village is what's considered a state-sponsored housing portfolio property. Uh, state has the same type of housing in multiple jurisdictions, uh, across, across our, our wonderful place that we live, uh, in excess of over, I think, 6,000 units in the state. What's interesting about this program is for a very long time, uh, the state promoted this housing as the last resort, you know, housing option for residents. And never encouraged housing authorities to consider anything like a rental increase. And when you go to a property like this, Rudy mentioned something very interesting, which was, uh, the authority operates solely off of rental revenue. And in the state program, um, you're paying something called base rent or 30% of your income. And base rents for the Talling Housing Authority, uh, start at 210 and cap out at 423. And so when you're modeling cash flow at a site with low rents like that, you can imagine that this type of portfolio property is really just getting by day to day. And so, uh, I would say about 10 years ago, the state of Connecticut really started to invest in providing grant opportunities for housing authorities to approach their capital needs. Uh, I began by communicating with the Connecticut Housing Finance Agency last June uh, and started talking to them about the state of the property that Old Post Village is in. About a month ago, we received an award from that organization in the amount of $217,000, which allows us to do a lot of the work associated with getting ready for this type of grant application. Old Post Village is eligible for small city grant funding in the amount of close to $2 million. And the state leverages an additional $3 million in bond financing to complete capital repairs that would make the property sustainable for approximately 20 to 30 years. I provided with you really quick, just to walk through a couple photos, if you haven't been to Old Post Village. It gives you a sense of the current condition of the property. It's up to you guys if you want to show it, but when you walk the site, you'll find that the roofs in general are in need of replacement. There's lifting shingles. There's gutters that, you know, provide cooling water at the base of our foundation. And that's not healthy for, for the overall structure. You have deteriorated siding and utility closets on the exterior of the building that are really, uh, starting to need significant repairs. Take a walk through the parking lot. You might get stuck in a pothole and trip and fall. And if you're somebody like me who likes to wear fancy shoes, you have to be really careful when walking on this site, which might trip and fall. And the other thing that's, uh, that's interesting, this is a site for residents who are elderly or disabled. And almost at every unit entry, you have to step up and into the units. And so that could be a significant barrier, uh, when trying to promote, uh, aging in place and, and being able to stay in your home as, as you move through the years. Uh, these pictures are, are our current community room. Um, and I show them because, uh, you can take a look at how wide these hallways are, how wide the doorways are. And they really don't meet current, um, accessibility requirements that would allow, you know, folks that are in need of assistance to get in and appropriately use those. These are two bathrooms, um, in their current condition, modified to, uh, meet the requirements of the residents that live in them. Uh, this funding application will allow for, for work to be done to make them accessible. So these are just, I don't know, I guess you can run through this, this picture here is the existing community room. And if you could flip to the next slide really fast. If you, if you go back and forth really quick, you can kind of see the distinction between the two. In order to create accessibility in that building, there's a small bump out that will be created. But what you'll find is you'll have a fully accessible laundry room that every resident will be able to use. You'll have two fully accessible bathrooms, as well as a kitchen and a nice community space to, to interact in. Um, so let me run quickly through the scope of work on this property, uh, for you. The building was originally constructed in 1977. It's 30 units. Uh, 22 of those units are one bedrooms. Eight of those units are studios. Uh, scope of work on the exterior building envelope would be a full roof and gutter replacement. It would be a full window replacement, and I'm sure some of our residents who are here tonight will talk about why that's really important. Um, and it would be replacement of all entry and storm doors on the site. Moving to site work, we would obviously make all those repairs to the parking lot. We would increase ADA accessibility to the ramps that are currently existing. We remove approximately 10 trees on the site. And there is this very interesting antenna in the backyard that kind of pops up out of nowhere. And it reminds me of like, I don't know if any of you guys ever watched the, the 100 or shows like that, but it reminds me of some sort of foreign kind of like aliens. And it's fairly old. In terms of building mechanical systems, these units operate off of mini-split units. Uh, they were put in around 2010 to 2012. And mini-split units have generally a useful life of 12 to 15 years. So they are reaching their end-of-life capacity. And I'm sure also residents tonight will talk about what that means for them in the winter, what that means for them in the summer, and how challenging it can be to make those repairs for them. In terms of the community room, it'd be a full renovation. Uh, so the flooring, kitchen, bathroom, all of it would meet ADA accessibility requirements. It's going to be a great space for everybody to gather and going forward. And then in terms of unit interiors, uh, three of these units will achieve full ADA compliance with current regulatory standards. Every unit, the entirety of the floors will be replaced. Uh, the entire bathroom will undergo a full renovation. So you're going to see new sink vanity, uh, a walk-in shower unit so that, um, we're not consistently, uh, providing a barrier to, to living. And, uh, we also believe that the funding will allow for full kitchen renovations at this time. We've, and, and the last thing I'll present on is we've discussed the potential of possibly being able to replace electric panels at these units and expand service capacity. However, we're not at the point yet with our scope process, the meaning to make that determination yet, but that is on the list if it's, if funding's available for that.
The last comment I wouldn't make is that this is a unique opportunity to partnership with them. Um, if we were just applying for small cities alone, we wouldn't be able to do the scope of work if Elderly Housing Management was just applying alone. So it's a nice combination. We've been working very closely for a long time to pull this together. And I think we might be successful.
We are going to be successful. Receiving the commitment of that $217,000 in pre-development dollars to the plans and specifications, as well as the hazardous materials testing and testing of the subject system on the site. That demonstrates the commitment from the state of Connecticut to make these renovations happen. And so, uh, I am very, I'm very hopeful that we'll receive a favorable, uh, award. Shall we submit the application?
And the town will be the applicant for this grant.
Are you, are you guys finished with your?
We are finished with our.
Well, I don't know how you, how you're defining it, but each resident, some of the residents would like to make a comment.
Yep.
Concerning the.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. We will get to that in one second.
Okay.
Before we do, I'm going to ask the council members if you have any questions before we open the public hearing. Um, I think you, you could do either. Uh, we, there will be another opportunity. Okay. Yeah. Whatever you want to do. Good. Okay. Is there a motion then to open the public here? Alex seconded it. Uh, and Joe's not online, right? No. Okay. So we'll do a voice vote. All in favor? All in. Opposed, abstained. So we are unanimous. So at this point, we have opened the public hearing. And now is the time, uh, for residents, uh, who might want to speak, uh, to, to do so. Um, again, we'd like to have your name and your address for the record. If you can come up, that would be great. If you can't, you could just stay in your seat and shout your sound out.
Katie, at the end, I have to give a report on public, uh, programming.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Can you just wait one second?
I sure can.
And we're going to, I'm going to turn it over to Colleen, who's going to do, thank you for reminding me, for a report on correspondence that has come in.
Yeah, real quick. So we've got two great, um, correspondents. It looks like one is our trail woman and, um, second verse too. So they're obviously in support of the Old Post Village and they, I'll just sum up the both. They both believe that this is a critical, um, project that should be done and that full support of a small city grant and application. Looks like one of them lives there. I can't tell if the other one does. Give their names for this.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just, um, yeah, we'll give it to Lisa for inclusion in the record, just like we normally would for any public hearing. just like we normally would for any public hearing. All right, thank you very much. Okay, thank you for your patience.
No problem.
Much appreciated. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Jeanne LaShaw from seven six three, Tallinn Stage Road, Unit fifteen. I have lived here for a little over six years. I'm a woods brat and I'm in my element over there. I have a coyote that walks through the backyard now and then. I've got a silver fox and a red fox that's mostly brown. And I've got the longest-legged deer I've ever seen. He's got to be at least fourteen hands' eye. And he comes through the property now and then. We also have a bear. He likes to eat the raspberries that are growing wild in the back, which is fine by me. The other one that I have is a lynx and he's my favorite because he's used to people. He'll sit there and look right at you and then wander back into the woods. We are centrally located here. We're near the hospitals, we're near the highways, we're near medical. We've got Benton River up the road, which is great for me because we've got two animals in the household. It's a very quiet location and we have a great sense of community. We all look out for each other, which is unusual today. That's unheard of. But if a neighbor needs something, we're there for each other. We are here tonight for one reason and one reason only. Opus Village. And it's just that, it's old. The roofs all need to be repaired. They leak. And I can attest to that. Because my former apartment, over my stove, was the ceiling fan. And it leaked. And I had a wash basin sitting on my stove every time it rained because I didn't want my electric stove to short out. No joke. Easter Sunday. I had this strong smell of nothing. The sewer cover blew off. We had raw sewage running across the roadway, down the gully, into a storm drain. When they came to pump the tank, they let us know the leach field is failing. A lot of the tanks can no longer be pumped out completely because they're going to collapse. They'll implode on themselves. I have windows. Once you open them, you can't close them. You better get a two-by-four and you better pound the hell out of it so you can lock that window. Because you're either going to be cooling the exterior or you're going to be heating the exterior. The windows are a disaster. My back door. I've got a gap at the top and a gap at the bottom. I have a neighbor who's going to be ninety-four. She has the same problem. She's sitting in her living room, she's got the door open, and she saw a mouse come in underneath the space in the bottom of the door like he owned the place. No problem, walk right in. My back door, I take that door handle out, pound it. It's the only way you can get the door open. It's that worked. It's just everyday little things that build up. Our parking lot. That's another thing. We've got a pothole. It's got coal patch. Look, coal patch doesn't last. Coal patch comes out. This hole's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I'm waiting for the day when it's big enough to swallow a camel. Because that's going to happen. The roadbed's gone. It's just dirt that's under there now. And that's what we're seeing. I have prepared a statement, but you don't need my statement here this way. The roadway, our little roundabout, and the walkways going to the apartments. My former partner, Albert Bazinet, and I were together almost eight years. Albert was sharp as a tack for his age. He was twelve years older than myself. He watched the local news. He watched CNN. He read the newspaper every day. He looked through all of the supermarket flyers and made out a grocery list. And he would tell me what he read in the newspaper. He would tell me what he saw in the news. And he would tell me, look what's on sale at Stop &amp; Shop. We went out to dinner. It was a warm fall night. It was still daylight, we hadn't done the clock change yet. Walking home to my former unit. There's a gap. Albert hit that gap. And he tripped. And he felt himself going backwards and arms flailing. And he tried to land on the grass and he couldn't do it. And the sound that I heard was, and I thought he was dead. At Johnson Memorial. They whisked him away and I'm sitting there in the waiting room. My doctor comes up to me and says, luckily, he doesn't have any broken bones. But it's a traumatic brain injury. The back of his head was extremely bruised, but so wasn't the front of his brain because it bounced down and on. And he warned me. He said, I hate to tell you this, but this could be the beginning of the end for Al. He turned eighty in December and I lost him a year and a half later. I bring this up because I see the walkways. I have a neighbor who's got a tennis ball now as a foot on his cane because the bottom of his cane gets stuck in those gaps. The tennis ball is big enough, he can slide over with it and not get caught. I don't want anybody else to go through what I went through for that last year and a half of Albert's life because it brought on a dementia and he didn't know who I was anymore. And that broke my heart. And it broke my heart of a lot of the tenants there that knew him because he used to play setback on the patio in the back of the community room. There were like six or seven guys that would get together every night in the summer and play setback. Or they'd play checkers or chess or some other board game. But to lose somebody that was still pretty sharp and cognitive and knew what he was doing, he could still drive. He just didn't want to do it at night anymore. So to see that decline from that injury, I don't want to see anybody else go through that. I don't want anybody else to fall because of the potholes in the parking lot or the gaps in the pavement. So please, please back us in our quest because we really do need this block grant. Because everything that I've stated, I'm speaking not for myself, but for the other thirty-seven residents of Opus Village because they all tell me what's going on with their units. I have one gentleman, he's got the original bathroom sink. What's holding it up is the plumbing because the sink is coming away from the wall. There's another unit. The ceiling is separating from the walls. There are issues because of its age. And as Rudy stated, you can't do squat when the only thing you're getting is rent receipts. That barely covers what's going on day to day as far as the electric bill in the community room, in the office. There is no wiggle room for anything. So we desperately need this funding. I thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Okay.
Dennis Deegan, six eight nine, Tallinn State Road. Obviously, I've heard of that location for a number of years. I'm appalled, quite honestly, to hear the condition that it's in. Did not realize that. And I would hope and expect that this is a no-brainer, right? For all of you, I would hope, right? The fact that it was allowed to get to this state is beyond appalling. And without even the very sad story of losing a partner because of the condition of a property is, you know, I don't know how people can live with themselves when you hear stuff like that quite often. So hopefully, everyone else is in support of this and can make it happen ASAP. Because it's really, really, to have people living in this town, in this day and age, in that environment is just terrible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Susan Musa Q is ninety-five, Tallinn Green. I'm here representing the Commission for People with Disabilities tonight to fully support our Human Services Department in their small cities grant application that will be used to repair, improve, and modify the Old Post Village housing complex built in nineteen seventy-seven. Our Human Services Department does an amazing job, wonderful job supporting and looking out for our underserved populations. And while there's certainly the need for more accessible and affordable housing in town, we again fully support this grant application and note that it will cost the town virtually nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, if I may, there's a lot of folks from the village. And if I could just have a show of hands who are from the village.
Wonderful.
And I think they all support the application.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public participation? Anyone online who wants to speak during public participation for this public hearing? No. Our Director of Human Services has something to include in the record for the public hearing?
Yeah. As part of the requirement, I am to update you on our program income account report. The town has had a housing rehab program loan program since nineteen ninety-nine. This funding originates from HUD and is passed through to the Department of Housing and then through the block grant program. Over the years, we've been successful in securing seven grant awards to fund housing rehab for a total of over two million dollars. The housing rehab loan program is a zero percent program. Eligible applicants meet the HUD low to moderate income guidelines and must be up to date on their mortgage and their taxes. The money, how does the town receive program income? Through the direct payoff of these loans when the property is sold or through a payment plan. Repayment of the housing rehab loans has continued to fund the program over the years and we haven't had to apply for additional funding. There currently is a balance of a present two hundred thousand in program income account, which a hundred thousand has been encumbered for three projects that are out to bid. And we have a waiting list of four additional projects. The funds are placed in a separate account which are used for the original activity for which they're granted, generated, I'm sorry, human rehabilitation. The state does allow the community from time to time to go after another eligible activity which meets the HUD natural objective. We've done this three times. One time to bring the water line down to Old Post Village. Another time for the Kremlin Foundation testing program. And the last time we did it for a generator and a fire alarm upgraded Old Post Village. So the administration of this program, the applicants are screened through the Human Service Office and then sent to a community consultant who serves as our housing rehab specialist. Their services are eligible and are reimbursed through the program income account.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else that needs to go on the record for the public hearing?
Thank that.
Okay. So seeing no one else is your last chance if you want to speak online too. Seeing no more public input, I would enter in a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Thank you. Move by Chris, is there a second? Second by Jacob, is there any discussion about closing the public hearing? Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? You want to oppose, abstain? So that is unanimous. Thank you.
I'd like to make my statement to Secretary.
Yeah, absolutely. Please, please do.
Thank you.
So Brian, we have before us a resolution. The consideration of a resolution for this small city block grant application. Is there any other information you want to give us before the council has a chance to ask questions or make comments?
There is. I would say that the property is not managed by the Town of Tallinn, that the management company here tonight is a newer management company and the repairs and such were not the town's responsible.
Thank you. Anything else you guys want to say first, or do you want us to go to questions? Okay, so questions, do you have one?
There's Barbara Clamack.
Okay.
So I'll start. Well, I've been there a couple times, but I know Chris and I October, September, whatever, we're over there and we could see, you know, how unpleasant it was up there, just on the outdoor, but see what it looks like in the inside. And obviously, like President said, this is a no-brainer. But that's really, I will first finish on what each part was going to say.
Sure, yeah, no, I'll, I can, what Colleen said, it obviously seems like a very good idea, no-brainer. I think it's good, as you mentioned, I think, for the physical health, mental health of the residents. Making it ADA accessible is very important. And it hasn't had improvements in thirty years. So, and just to even make them habitable. So I think it's really important that we do this. I think it's really important for the residents of Old Post Village. And I am so sorry to hear about the loss of residents. So I think this hopefully can really improve Old Post Village. Thank you for all your time putting into it.
Yeah, I won't keep it brief, but I just want to thank Human Services, EHM, all the residents that spoke for bringing their testimony here tonight. I think this is a great opportunity and I certainly hope we can take advantage of it.
So I just wanted to comment that I bought my home during COVID. Lived down the long driveway right behind Old Post Village. So I agree, the nature back there is just unparalleled. I don't share the same excitement when the bear comes around. I've turned my house into a little homestead. We have chickens and I have a three-year-old daughter. So that's the one critter I don't enjoy seeing popping around. But every time I make that right here on Old Post and then down my driveway, I definitely smile when I go by. You guys are always outside. You guys try to remain active. The community there is definitely special. And to be an adjacent neighbor through the woods is a nice thing to have, to have you all there. I'm looking forward to do whatever we can do for you guys. And furthermore, in my personal life, I'm a carpenter and decently strong guy. So if you guys ever need anything.
Be careful what you say.
I know. I probably share nothing by time this year and next year. But if any of you, seriously, if any of you need assistance with something, I'm legitimately a walk away. So.
Yeah, just a comment. You know, I can tell you, as someone who has gone through the process of trying to make a home accessible to an elderly family member, it's, you don't realize how challenging it is and how many obstacles there are until you're faced with that. Definitely something that I didn't expect when I was going through the process, how many little things that you take advantage when you can walk, to be honest, and walk safely. So I, you know, it's disheartening to hear things that are going on. I definitely can understand the frustration. And I mean, as some others have said, this seems to be a no-brainer to support this.
Thank you. I had a few questions. What kind of a timeline are we looking at? If we approve this resolution tonight, what's the next steps? What is the timeline level?
With the grant application for small cities, it's due at the end of May.
Right.
So depending on. So depending on their timelines to award the grant and in the combination with the funding that you're seeking too, I would think of late that we would.
Typically, the Department of Housing will make awards in September. So get into late September. When you receive the award, you enter, we would enter into a sub-recipient agreement is what it's called with the Town of Talon and put the project out to bid at that point. And I would imagine that you might see work starting when the weather allows for that, so probably February or March of next year. Because there are two funding sources, we're submitting two separate applications. One goes to the Department of Housing and one goes to Connecticut Housing Finance Agency. It's unlikely they'll get awarded at the same time, so we're trying to phase it into two phases. It's more likely the Department of Housing Small Cities Funding will come first and then the bond authorization will come second. But total construction timeline is probably 18 months once we start.
And so the resolution and the request before the Town Council is for approval to apply for the Small Cities Grant, correct?
Yeah.
So do you, will you be coming back for approval for the second one? So you, the bonding authorization can be, doesn't need our approval?
Right, so Small Cities is only available to municipalities. And you submit projects on behalf of your, of your town and community, whereas the housing authority itself is eligible to apply for the bond financing directly to CHFI.
Okay, wonderful. One thing, I guess my only other request would be if, assuming we approve this, if we could just ask the town manager to keep us updated on this, to know if we were awarded this grant in its entirety and then maybe you could make sure through our Human Services Department kind of keep us updated on how the progress of the project would go as well.
Absolutely. Their bedwork, Meg, are both pretty strong, keeping us updated on all the projects.
And once we are awarded, we'll come back to you with the assistance agreement and have to get a resolution to approve that.
Okay.
So there'll be other processes and you'll be well aware of what's going on.
Yeah, lots of process. Got it. Public funding. Yes.
It'll be an act of coordination, I know we can do it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Well, I, the other comment I will make is I would thank, thank you guys for coming to us with this. You know, I, I know that the application for a $2 million grant is, is quite an undertaking. So thank you and, and thank you for, for your volunteerism on, on the housing authority and to all the residents for coming tonight. It's, it's always fun to see a full house here, so you kind of made our night too. So thank you so much. Are there any other comments or questions before we consider a motion for the resolution? Okay, so we do have a resolution before us in Agenda Item 6.1. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Jen made the motion, is there a second?
We'll second it.
Jacob, second. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose, abstain, so that this is unanimous approval? So please go forward, apply, and we're cheering for you, so.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, thank you. So I know, maybe we'll take, if there's no objection, maybe we just take a two or three-minute recess to let people move. Is that okay? Any objections to that? Okay, so we're just gonna recess for just a minute in case people want to leave. Certainly. Come back to order. Yeah, I know, I didn't bring it second. We're gonna, we're gonna come back to order. Thank you everyone for giving us a couple minutes. The next item on our agenda is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Do you want to start, or do you want to do the other? Jacob's going to do one, I'm gonna do the other because we actually. Okay, Jacob, you want to start?
Sure. No, so before to the meeting, we had the ARCA subcommittee meeting, first one we've had in a little while. Since the approving the wreck garage, there has been a lot of funds available, but luckily, thanks to getting some better than expected prices upon some of our expenditures, we've had some funds. So the committee voted to recommend council, we spend some money upon putting in a
aerator.
Aerator, that's a better term, yeah. Not a water pump that you tricked out, but an aerator for a pond, which will make the water quality better, pretty more swumable and enjoyable for residents. And in addition, we also voted to purchase some liners for the, for the temporary ice rink. So those liners don't last all that long, so we bought enough to last. Or we will.
Recommend.
Council.
Yes.
Yes, we should recommend, yeah. Yeah. Well, it's not a controversial issue and we'll see easily, but hopefully get us, keep, get us set for, for like the next several years. Other than that, we're just waiting to see how everything else plays out and we might be able to approve some other things.
Great.
That's it.
Great. And so are we expecting those to come to our next regular council meeting? Is that what you're thinking?
If the council desires.
Would be up for consideration at our next council.
We'll look at the schedule, but yeah, soon.
Okay, soon.
Yeah, coming attractions.
It's always good to know it's coming.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions about ARCA? More details, okay.
And I just want to add on, Scott Lafferty's doing a great job with saving some money on things that he was approved for, so we just wanted to put that out there too. He's doing a great job and it's this way. They're back in the town, but yeah. Yep. So yeah, so you want to go next?
Yes, please.
So we met on April 11th. There's a lot of change orders happening. I'll just run through them real quick. So they got the overhead doors to the station, but when they installed them, the windows were not on the right pane. So we have a special meeting next week to decide how we're gonna go about it. It's gonna be a credit replacement. We're just gonna add a third window because there's two, should be one, two, three of pain. So it's basically a pain. It won't quit, it'll probably put the station out of service for a little bit when they put them in, but it's not gonna slow down the project. That's not gonna interfere because it's new outdoors. So that was one. Then we discussed a potential change for additional cabinet in hood over the stove. That one, I believe, the contractor is going back. Or gonna come back to us on that one, right, Megan?
Yeah, so they're gonna, they're gonna come back with, there's gonna be no cost to the town to do that. And whether or not we have a credit will maybe something we need to negotiate.
Yeah, yeah, that one seems to have been on our agenda for a couple of months and Megan is really working really hard on that one for sure. She's been putting a lot of time into that. So I don't know. I don't think there was really anything else. I don't think so. So it's just moving along. As far as we know, it's still on schedule for the end of May, which is exciting. Like I said, next week we have a special meeting and hopefully soon we can find out what money's left to go on and offer some reforms for the other two stations. If I missed anything, Jacob?
You're good.
I'm good? All right, perfect. Yeah, so that's it.
Katie, thank you. And the roads salt, house force met a few weeks ago. We haven't had a meeting. We need to put out a law sheet for an update, but we have, we are proceeding with testing and next steps for the four priorities. All right. Then the next item on our agenda is reports. Yes. Okay, please go ahead.
So I know with the Veterans Commission, April 18th, this is in regards to the Veterans Memorial that's going to be placed at the end of Talon Green. The official seal has been approved and worked through, which is gonna be on the back of the existing monument. And this has been submitted to the town. The official Space Force seal, that's only allowed on government buildings, so that that would kind of hold up there with that. That they're using a similar insignia for that for that seal. There's 25,000 being allocated to the Veterans Monument. The town manager has been apprising the Veterans Commission's plan for the new monument and awaiting more details. So that's the first thing I'd bring up. The other issue, I think this is still a bipartisan supported issue and something that maybe we could work through the council, but the day after our election that we had as a council, there was a scheduled Veterans Dinner. Proceeds going to that commission and veterans in need. Lisa Burns was very involved in that commission. Town manager was very involved with that. They ran it the kind of a snafu with all electronic monetary contributions, so Square App, PayPal, Venmo, things of that nature. You know, folks coming in saying, I'm not necessarily gonna go to the Veterans Center, but can I still give money? At the end of the day, we're kind of trying to figure out how many meatballs do we need? When it went all said and done, you know, so they, they kind of, they kind of ran into a little bit of trouble there. So going forward, I would like to see if that's something that we could, we could help offer some info for them to be able to sort of like, Alex, do they just, do they not have like a technology to receive the electronic payment or like what?
Thank you. Brian, maybe you could help me with this. I, I know that Lisa had some information too that goes through a certain.
Difficult process. Thanks, Alex. It was a difficult process when you asked the town to start receiving money for this sort of thing and it, you know, it's intensive on Lisa and town staff as to how deep do we want to get into it. So we started to try to help them through the Venmo process. There were some challenges external into the town, but with the, with the, my sense is if they were set up to go again, they would probably figure it out. We, the town and Lisa are certainly more than ready to assist them in any way, shape, or form. And in my town manager's report, I'll talk about my meeting with the Veterans Recognition Committee leadership on another matter. We tried to work them through it. It became a big technology thing.
Okay. All right.
And then one of the other things, Pat Susie always does a great job here in town with anything that comes across her plate. There has been some talk of maybe getting a tent up on the town green for the farmers market for the veterans. I know that we have a separate one for the Rids across America, so that might be something that comes across the table at some point. Again, if somebody comes up and doesn't want to buy a burger from us or what, what have you, whatever we're selling, we'd kind of want some, some guidance on how to operate through that. So the help of yourself and the town manager and we said, and the council, I think that we can get that done for the commission, so. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Do you want to go?
Sure. Permanent Celebration Committee met April 18th. I was only able to make it to a portion of the meeting. Flying solo that night. But they, I did catch the piece about their memorial day parade, going through the details of planning that and they've done an excellent job at budgeting and also delegating the plans. There's a lot that goes into this parade. Truly looking forward to it because it sounds like it's going to be a really great event. So that is going to be on. So, that is going to be on May 26th. I believe there's a family bingo night, June 21st. And that's going to be at the rec center?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just wanted to put that out there, there's going to be a family bingo night, June 21st at the rec center, and they are meeting next on May 16th.
Thank you.
So, WPCA met on April 16th, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend due to technology issues, but I did get a report back. So, a couple of major points there. As you might know, our sewer system is a feeder system, it all goes to Brennan, which is undergoing a very large overhaul. That overhaul is going to be completed at about June of this year, so we're closing in upon that. After the final review's been completed, a new debt service schedule will be issued to the town. Additionally, with regards to the CTE project, the main line has been installed, so we're starting to see some progress upon that part of that project as well. Also, I'll just emphasize that this is a commission, there's some seats available upon it, quite a few, actually. So, if there's anybody interested in serving, serving, it needs quarterly, it's good, good board to the town.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Commission of People with Disabilities met on April 18th. Talked a little bit, ADA issues in the town. Couldn't really talk too much about the sidewalk, because there's not too many updates because of hidden litigation. And then they reviewed a list of, list of disability topics. Share, review the ADA Small Business Guide, and then we also talked about, they started a survey, that they got, or started a lot of feedback on different topics. They have the interest in Ansel Group Homes, cost of living, accessibility, and I'm going to send this to you, Brian, to look into, when I talked about the mat, how there might be a fee, I know we didn't vote on anything. There's an ADA guide that you can't really charge or anything, so I'll send that to you, unless she's still, you're still here.
Yeah, that was brought up by one of the members, and I can forward that to you as well.
You forward it to Brian?
Yeah, no, I will.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't get to read too much into it, but one of the members wanted to make sure that at least you were aware of it. And then, that we've talked about, what we talked about tonight, that we just approved, and then future speakers and presentations going forward, that would be very interesting. So, I think that covered everything. Again, they're a great group, very dedicated to helping.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had planning and zoning on Monday night, it was a relatively short meeting. They discussed, I, it's annually, but they do an affordable housing plan, and so they're doing their draft affordable housing plan review. I think it was the first pass Monday night, so they continue to work on that, and that's a public document, certainly the current council plan is public. They also set a public hearing for a zoning regulation amendment, which is to allow for accessory use in structures, allows for lots greater than five acres to have larger structures, barns, what have you, than you would otherwise would have been able to under prior zoning regulations. And so, there's a public hearing on that on Monday, June 10th, so they can receive a public input where they make any changes or suggested changes to the regulations. And then they also appointed a resident to be an alternate zoning enforcement officer, so it's good, always good to have people stepping up to do that. And the Planning and Zoning Commission always puts a fantastic job working with presidents and builders and things like that, to try to make town as friendly to construction and things as possible, so that's about it.
Thank you. The, for me, the Stark District Commission met last Wednesday, which was the same night as our budget presentation, so I wasn't able to attend that meeting. I continue to attend CROG legislative policy meetings, which involves a lot of updates to what's happening on the state budget. As you might know, they're, the appropriations committee of the state legislature did not release a budget, so things are moving forward on the legislature right now in, with the same budget. It's a, it's a biennial budget, so anyway, we don't really understand the, all the impact to that yet, except that it doesn't change what we project for grants, because they're not changing the budget, so therefore there are no changes. But there are eight legislative days left, maybe nine, and lots happened in the last eight or nine days. So, I'm sure at our next council meeting, I will have some updates, and then I would expect the CROG and cost, and everyone else will be giving the town some updates on things that are going on in the legislature and how they interact with us. The Eastern Highland Health met last week, maybe, I was not able to attend that meeting because I was at work, and I understand they're starting to pursue a new strategic plan, because their strategic plan is out of date. So, they are working on a subcommittee of members to work on their new strategic plan, and Brian is now a member of the Eastern Highland Health, oh, he will be potentially, if we vote him in today. So, he can, he is now, right, this is just a reappointment, so Brian's following along, too. Yeah. That's, those are, those are things I've been keeping my fingers on. All right. So, we are now on to item 8.1, which is new business consideration of a resolution approving the 2024 Fair Housing Action Plan.
Thank you. So, in order to get money from the Department of Housing, Small Cities, there are certain steps we have to do. One of those steps is to further fair housing and have a fair action plan. This is today, every three years, the fair action plan is to be renewed. The one, the current one we have here, we've had since 1991, with obviously several renewals. It's something that we take, we, the town, take very seriously. The only major change, change in the draft resolution is the quote, "use of a guide doc," those, that language is there. Bev Velody, who's here, our Director of Human Services, she's our Fair Housing Officer, something, and it's something that her and her staff take very seriously. If you read through the fair action plan, all those steps that are in there that were required to do, the town has been doing for a long time. Not to, not to belittle it, but this is a formality for us to move forward in the grant process, because the town is already very strong in this regard.
To, I kind of stole my thunder, but.
Does not.
No, obviously, we have taken that very seriously, and I've taken it seriously. We continue to get trained, we continue to get any updates, make that information available to residents, work with housing authorities or other entities in town to try to further more affordable and low-income housing. You know, prior to COVID, we were doing more trainings, we've done trainings for planning and zoning, we've done trainings for other groups, and we're going to, the Golden Order Farm has started up again, and Connecticut Fair Housing and a few other entities as well. So, we're kind of a resource for the community and for residents.
Questions?
Just one quick question. Is the impetus behind updating the plan now, is it for the grant, like, we have to, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we do have a resolution before us. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in Agenda Item 8.1?
So.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Colleen. Is there any further discussion? No? Okay. All those in paper?
Aye. Aye.
That was you, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Item 8.2 on our agenda is consideration of approval to waive the building permit fees for work associated with the Small Cities Grant Funding Application for Improvements at Old Post Village 763, Town St. Row.
Thank you. Again, this is more groups have had to jump through to apply for said grant. One of the requirements is that, that they do ask the town to waive the fees. I sent some communication, which I'll, I'll get into the minutes as well, from our permits director, I'm sorry, building inspector. I had a, you know, two of our employees had a disagreement over this, exactly what we're going to discuss, and they came to my office with, with those disagreements, and I thought, what, what a good problem to have, that two employees care about this so much, the town and their jobs, that they had a spirited disagreement about it, and we bring this to council now. And it's something we have to weigh. In a nutshell, we're going to apply for this grant, we're to get the grant, they're going to make building changes. To make the building changes, there's all sorts of permits they have to apply for, which have a cost. The cost is roughly $60,000 or so, an estimate, I believe. The request is to waive said fees. That being said, I think it should be noted that the requirement for us, for the, for the, the requirement for them to ask for the town to waive the fees is a part of the grant, in that it also would weigh against us if we were to charge the fees. And if we were not to get the grant as a result of charging the fees, then we wouldn't get the fees anyways. So, it's, it's my preference to lean in that direction, but I don't have a vote in this, of anything. I have Megan Masa and Bev here to discuss that as well, as well as Kelly McDermott, who spoke earlier. So, all things that we can discuss moving forward.
Do you guys want to say anything else before we ask questions? I would like to just also point out that the town of Tolland is the applicant, so we would be receiving the grant award. And typically, if it were a town-owned property, we would just automatically be exempt from having to pay those fees. Because this property is owned by the housing authority, that requires a council decision to waive those fees. And technically, the fees could be paid out of the grant funding, it's an allowable expense, but the grant funding, they're really looking for us to to maximize, you know, our leverage. So, we do score better if we waive those fees, and the tune is like, I think, $66,000 in building permit fees. And if we do pay those fees, that would come off of the grant award amount and reduce the project's goal.
And we are advocating to have them reduced, because that way, it can go back into the project and perhaps get more windows or something of that, and we are the applicant, the town of Tolland.
So, you can imagine, the applicant of the grant is asking for grant money to give to someone else, so they can give it right back to us. It's where we call that money laundering, but it's not. But, you know, it's certainly, it doesn't cast light favorably on the town of Tolland to engage in that sort of activity.
Can you just talk a little bit about how heavily, like, waiving or not waiving those old permit fees, like, do you know, like, weighted in the evaluation of us continuing the grant?
I don't, our grant consultant is on Zoom, she might be able to, if we can ask Megan Burnett to unmute, she might be able to address that.
So, it's such a large grant that there is a grant consultant, Mrs. Burnett, and she can, did you hear the question, Mrs. Burnett?
Absolutely, yes, I can answer that. There is no points necessarily lost, but the Department of Housing certainly favors on seeing the extra leveraging. Pardon my voice, I have COVID right now. If the, if the town decides to leverage those costs, it certainly would benefit the application, however, there are no points lost.
Thank you, and thank you for being on, just by the way.
Are there any further questions?
So, I guess, what was the disagreement between the two departments, it sounds like?
Well, I forwarded the email, you know, sometimes we judge our building departments by how much money they bring in. And certainly, if we take away that, $66,000, it'll look like the building department's doing less, and it's going to create more work for them. So, he favored, I believe, does that encapsulate it fairly?
He wrote a statement.
Exactly, that is included in there, but he wants the, the town to accept the fees, because it's going to be, you know, more, more work for him than less money showing up in his revenues. Essentially, that's it, I'm probably not doing it justice, but the email's in there.
So, but it's something we'd get it back, is that what you're saying?
More, it's more money going into the project, and then, again, it's just the, the visual of the town applying for money and then getting it to some, and then getting it back is problematic, and it's, when we could be putting it towards actual building improvements over in Old Post Village.
Any other questions?
Can I ask, Kelly, would it benefit your application as well, if the fee to waive or if the government asks that same requirement?
So, it's, it's a very interesting question you ask, when you talk about scoring of an application, because leveraged funding is very important to demonstrate partnerships, right? And these two funding sources, though, they're not scored. However, it's still very important for us to demonstrate partnership on the, on both sides of that application. And to everyone's point here, the housing authority itself is a, is a quasi-municipal entity authorized by town boardmen. The chair, the chair of the board is here, he's appointed by the town council, you know, the board report is, is authorized by you to exist. So, it's a, it's an interesting relationship that exists anyway between the town and the housing authority itself.
You mentioned in your fiscal report, Bev, that we've done grants for this property before, in, in prior grants, have we waived the fees?
Those, when I have to ask Megan, she, she work on those, we might not, and on the small ones.
Yeah. Fair, I just asked you a question about, so, okay. Yeah. And, and just for clarity, and we just did get some clarity, that this is a quasi-public entity, but this is the Tolland Housing Authority, it's a nonprofit, they're, they're not.
We're not pro.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a 501(c)(3) designated institution, it's a municipal entity.
It's a municipal entity, yeah. Okay. Yeah. So, feels like charging ourselves. Brian, for the issue of tracking and using permit fees to enumerate the work that's done of our building department, is there a way that we could, maybe you could include in your, your report on a not, I don't want to add more administrative burden, but is there a way that the, the building inspector, the, the building department could give us a sense of the, where these fees might fit in, so that we could make sure that we're keeping this in mind as we continue to look at the financial situation of the building department to address the building department's concerns?
I don't, a little unclear what you asked, but I would preface, preface it with this, whatever you ask, Jim is very good at doing.
So, I, maybe that, maybe we could just get, you know, maybe a quarterly update or something.
How much work they're doing.
Yeah, how much work they're doing.
Okay, that would be with him and the fire marshal, I will, Jim will do that anyways, and I'll get that in the.
And again, I don't think the intent, my intent, anyway, is not to ask for additional administrative burden, but perhaps.
They include that in their town manager.
Yeah, to keep in mind that if we were to vote in favor of this, that with, if not for our vote, those fees would be assessed at various. if not for our vote, those fees would be assessed at various times. And we value the work that's being done for the waived fees.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other questions? Concerns? Okay, so we do have a motion then before us to waive these fees. It is in Agenda item eight point two, a draft resolution. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Call me in the motion. Is there a second? Jacob's second in the motion. Is there any discussion about the motion to waive the building permit fees? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so I think we're all in favor then. Thank you. Thank you very much. We really appreciate.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the work you're doing, so thank you. All right. We're getting onto exciting stuff here. Agenda item eight point three, consideration and action on a resolution to appoint the town manager to the Board of Directors to the Eastern Highland Health District through the fill-in term of service through May first, twenty twenty seven. Yep.
Thank you for considering this. Actually, I have to say, Eastern Highlands has really stepped up in regards to the salt and the wells issue. And over, compared to where they were two years ago, and now we really need their, their partnership. And I'm glad to be a part of the, the Board of Directors so that I can ensure that they stay on course of being our partner in mitigating through this.
Any questions, concerns with town managers? I would, I would echo what Brian just said there. I think in my limited time on this board, it's a good group, so it's not actually a bad appointment here. And also, they, we are working very closely with Eastern Highland Health on contaminated wells issues. So I do think it is in our town's interest to have Brian on this board. So if there are no other comments, there is a draft resolution in our packet, item eight point three. Is there a motion to approve the draft resolution as well? Alex made the motion. Is there a second? Jen's second in the motion. Yeah. Is there any other comments about this? No. Okay, all those in favor? I think that is unanimous. Thank you. Item eight point four is the financial update for the period ending March thirty first, twenty twenty four. This is, I believe, the third quarter of the fiscal year.
Great. Thank you, Chair. As requested by this council, and I concur, is there the need for a quarterly update on the fiscal situation of the town, which has always, to this point, been very strong. And with us, we do have Lisa Hancock, who is out of state on virtually. But Chris Jordan, the Assistant Director of Finance for the Town, is in, in front of us. He's going to present the report to us here tonight. Thank you, Chris, for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we start with revenue. Projected revenue, of course, these are estimates until the end of the year, but as of these numbers ninety days ago, the revenue was estimated to exceed the budget by $1,282,000. For three major reasons. One is that we have higher than anticipated collections of property taxes. We also have an unanticipated intergovernmental revenue. I'll get into that a little bit. And number three, we also have higher than anticipated investment income. So as a result, there'll be no need to use the $200,000 that's currently budgeted for use of fund balance as a revenue source. Property taxes. Collections are estimated to exceed the budget by total of $181,000. Now, from that $181,000, there's a few categories within that. The current levy will be estimated to exceed the budget by 60,000. The motor vehicle supplemental will exceed by 26,000. And prior year collections will exceed the budget by 40,000, so these are all estimates. Delinquent interest and liens will exceed by 40,000. And state telecommunications, telecommunications taxes will exceed by about 13,000. So all that's the 181,000. The intergovernmental revenue will exceed the budget in itself by about $374,000. Now, that three hundred, of that, that's 368,200. That's from unanticipated municipal revenue sharing. Now, this was approved by the state of Connecticut after the start of our fiscal year. So there's no way we could have put this in the budget. Now, as a result of that, $276,000 of that is going to be reallocated to the municipal tax stabilization funds. And an additional 92,000 will be reallocated to CNRE fund, capital and nonrecurring expenses. And this is all per the tax, tax stabilization fund ordinance. And that's where the 368,000 is going to be split.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last two points that you had there?
Absolutely. The, the 368,207 from intergovernmental revenue, that's going to be split, reallocated. 276,000 of that, 260,155, will be allocated to the municipal tax stabilization fund. Thank you. And the second part, 92,0052, will be reallocated to the CNRE fund. And for both of those splits, that's because of the municipal tax stabilization ordinance. Intergovernmental education, that was, this will be estimated to exceed the budget by about $175,000. And that's mainly because there's a reinstated education cost sharing revenue from the state of Connecticut. And a portion of this also will be reallocated to the municipal tax stabilization fund, about $131,000. And an additional 43,000 will be reallocated to the CNRE fund. And again, this is because of the tax stabilization fund ordinance. And the third major driver of the revenue is the investment income. That is projected to exceed the $201,000 budget by about $812,000. And this is due to continued higher than anticipated interest rates and very efficient cash management. See. And I anticipate that to continue. I know that we've seen a little bit of a, little bit of a bobble in the interest rates, but I don't think it's enough of a difference to make a difference just yet. And expenses, we anticipate a projected expense savings totally of about $101,000 from the budget. This is partly because of net savings from attrition, netted out with other expense shortfalls. Now, if you'll note, the budget appears, it appears to be overdrawn by about $640,000 on the expense side. And this is not the complete picture. Because by year end, we'll have the municipal tax stabilization entries that have yet to be made, as well as an approved transfer of the education reserve fund that will be done in April. And the budgets that will be updated and reported on in the fourth quarter. So there will still work out to be a net savings of $101,000. So I, I asked Lisa why we just couldn't report that in the, the report the way it is now. And she just says, well, you just can't do that. But that's why we're going to ship it this way. There is an anticipated shortfall within administrative services of about $29,000, almost $30,000. This is mainly due to insurance claims deductibles higher than, which is the budgeted and also leave fees. And this is anticipated to be covered by savings from, savings from attrition. There are a few departments that are experiencing savings in attrition, and that's mainly our human services, library, fire department, revenue, revenue collection department, and about a $68,000 savings in the public safety. And this is attrition from the state troopers and also the hiring of a lower-cost state trooper. Certain financing uses, still a transfer out of the general fund to other appropriate funds. This is including a 172,000, $172,500 for the council to approve for the Board of Ed Reserve Fund. This is their request for a savings transfer from their previous fiscal year budget into their, into their education reserve fund. And the transfer for the CNRE and for the municipal tax stabilization ordinance, that's going to be done at year end. That will be about $543,000. And as of right now, there is no interdepartmental transfers, except for the transfer that was done from the contingency for negotiated wage increases. And we are, we still estimate that the budget, the budgetary fund balance by year end is estimated to increase about by $667,000. And lastly, the E chip, now the estimated year-end cash balance for each chip is about $1,797,000. That's a lot, June 30th. And that's about all, all I have. Any questions I can answer?
So the E chip, so are we doing better than we thought we were going to be doing?
I think, I think, yes, we are. But it's my understanding that it's, you know, it's hard to peg a long-term estimate with each it based on, based on short-term claims results. But I, I see the E chip every month myself. And claims are just, there's no pegging one month to the, to the next for claims. I mean, it could be 30, 40, $50,000, or 180, or $500,000. So I reckon so the E chip once a month. And then, you know, based on short-term results, I'm not, I wouldn't be too excited about making a long-term, a long-term projection.
So it says 400 or whatnot.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's, it's a big change since the last, the last estimate.
Is that normal? But I know last year was different, but.
I think, I think. Yeah, I, I think we're still experiencing some, some of those changes. I, it's my understanding that the way claims are now, it's not, it's not completely like it used to be. It's not, you know, I think there are different models in place that, that don't seem to be working, you know, for insurance companies and claims that maybe they have in the past. Something has fundamentally changed, but it's, you know, it's well beyond my scope. Yeah.
I think we kind of knew that one of the tax stabilization was going to be at roughly, you said you mentioned like around, you predicted about 700,000? Is that right? Yeah. So a lot of these numbers seem to be a lot higher. I think that can't speak well. My neighbor extorted me a shake of his head. Yes, a lot. So are any of these numbers different than what we're projecting in the budget? Like, are they a lot, they seem a lot higher that we didn't know about. Is that accurate statement? Or is this money that we knew we were going to get and that was part of the budget we put forward?
The budget we put forward is for next fiscal year, and this is an evaluation of this fiscal year.
Right. But I guess we know there's this flow coming in.
Yeah, the, the only, I, I think the the we knew about, we've known about the changes, yep, in the municipal tax stabilization and CNRE. Those, those numbers haven't changed. They've been, this, this report has been consistent on those two numbers. I think the, the number on the total the, the fund balance increase is the new thing here. And of course, that would impact, say, the percentage of, of, excuse me, of unassigned fund balance when we calculated that based on what we passed in the budget to use for next fiscal year. But other than that, I, I don't think there are any other impacts because of the next year's.
Sure. Thank you for explaining. I mentioned the clarity, and I, I see, it's just so tiny. There's going to be, some number is going to be reduced by 150, because it's going back and going into the ambulance reserve fund. Is that correct, too? That gets really tiny on my eyes.
Can I interject on that one real quick? That, that is the, this is Lisa. The ambulance reserve, each year, we budget $39,140 for the for the general fund budget from ambulance collections. The ambulance collections go all into the general fund throughout the year. And then at the end of the year, the difference between the 39,140 and what's collected gets transferred to the ambulance reserve fund. So we always try to just make a note that that money will be coming out of the numbers at year end.
Okay, so it's not an additional that you transfer. It's just a.
It's just the normal process.
Okay. Because I was just wondering, because I know in future years that we got with month ago of the ambulance reserve, it started going to the right end of the year, rate of war or something. So I just wanted to make sure, paying attention to that. But I think that's all I have for now.
So I just, I wanted to follow up on something Colleen said to make sure I understand. So the projected increase in the tax stabilization fund and CNRE, that's still in keeping with the projections that we had for the total balances with the most funds when we were talking about the budget? Okay. Yeah. And the only other thing I want to say is, I think you manage the investments for the town, right? And I just want to say thank you for doing an excellent job because that's consistently been the least since I've been here, overperforming. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I never imagined it even be noticed, to be honest.
No. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So first of all, I, I want to reiterate that getting this on a quarterly basis is wonderful. So thank you both for the work that clearly goes into this and for your thorough explanation today. I just want to make sure that I understand, based on this report, it sounds like the estimate with a big, huge asterisk, that this is only an estimate, deposit to fund balance, to unassigned, unassigned fund balance.
That's correct.
At the end of the fiscal year is estimated to be
Six sixty seven.
Six sixty, six hundred sixty seven thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that the, when we started the fiscal year, the intent was to withdraw from the unassigned fund balance. I saw it and then I lost it. $286,000, right? $286,800, that was the budget. She's shaking her head no.
I thought, let me see if I can unmute her here. I thought it was 200.
Sorry about that. No, it was 200,000 in the original budget. And then middle of the year, you authorized another 86,800, I think it was, for use for the water testing in the capital fund. Fun balance. So that's how it got to 286.
Thank you.
Whatever it was.
So between those two, we had anticipated reducing the unassigned fund balance by $286,000. And now, based on this report, am I reading this correct? That a big fat asterisk, it's an estimate only. Instead of reducing it 287,000, we are instead estimating that we will increase it 667,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
In the last quarter also, we had estimated that we weren't going to be using the 200,000.
Yes, 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 this is consistent, right? But we are, we're at the point where you know, between those, if you, we're not withdrawing, and instead of withdrawing, we're adding.
Yep.
That brings us in the $980,000 range combined.
Well, I look at it this way, just a mental number that, you know, if we see, exceed the, the interest earning. Well, I look at this way, just a mental number that, you know, if we see exceed the, the interest earnings by eight hundred thousand. You know, so, you know, it works out so that, you know, that's, that, that would go to. Unassigned fund balance, you know, minus other shortfalls. So it, that's really the big strike thing. In fact, this year, I think, you know, it's, you know, we, the town just may earn more money this year in interest than, than ever.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to echo the comments of my colleagues on how wonderful this is. This is a wonderful thing.
Thank you.
And just to stress that this is, there's no taxpayer money. Here, this is just a straight out, very good movement of investment funds.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing, not doing anything crazy, nothing's risky, just sticking to the policy. They're just, just trying to be efficient about it.
Yes, you are.
Pay attention to it.
Being very efficient about it. And I understand, you know, we, we are leveraging a market situation that. Is relatively out of our control, right? But we are, you are doing an excellent job leveraging that situation for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I, and I would just. This is very great perspective to know that we're. We're on track to be almost a million dollars net more than we anticipated in unassigned fund balance. For the end of this fiscal year, estimated, subject to change, but that is, that is the, that is the financial situation we are in as of right now.
I, I think it is a, it is a fairly. Modest. Estimate, modestly conservative estimate, as it should be. And to me, that means there's. A higher probability that will exceed that number and a lower probability that will miss it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to you.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions.
Sure, go ahead.
One is, I think we're doing these quarterly, the next one will be in July. Will that be kind of a? Post-budget. Report because at that point, this fiscal year will end and will be a new one.
It'll be the last report for fiscal year twenty four, but it's not the closeout report. The closeout report comes with the. There's an official, you give us an official closeout report. I think we got it in October of last year. Is that right, Lisa? So sometime in the fall. It does take a while, if I remember Lisa telling us.
Actually, after we. After we get the audit going, I'll usually give you a preliminary estimate of where I think things are headed. At that time, and then in. Usually January, we'll give you the full report after the audit is complete.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
That answers your question. Yeah.
My second question is, and, you know, again, thank you for managing our investments so well, but. I, I just saw a note here, you know, about rates starting to go down slightly. I was just curious, do you? I know this is slightly unknowable, but do you feel that this is, this year might be kind of a peak for investment or?
I think, I think it could be.
Okay.
Now, I'm, I'm still optimistic because. You know, every time I try to pay attention to where rates are going and all of CNBC talking heads, nobody seems to get it right. So, or at least the timeframe. But I think if we're starting to see a little bit of a wobble, I think. You know, it's possible, maybe even likely that next year won't be as good as this year. But I'm feeling it, it might not be too far off. I guess we'll have to, I guess we'll have to see.
Yeah, okay, now that's good, good context to have. Obviously, we hope we can continue to, to benefit, but.
You know, stop, so too, yeah. Thank you.
On that note, just to kind of piggyback on what you just said, I, I would just. I, there's a lot of pages in the budget book, but just a reminder that we did. Increase the estimated income from investment for fiscal year twenty five. Over fiscal year twenty four or twenty three.
Yeah.
Again, and not, not to the same levels that we're seeing here, because we are conservatively, moderately.
Yeah, moderately conservative.
Yeah, moderately conservative. We, it's very careful about how those estimates are made, but. In that vein, as, as you say, we do it, we did budget in for more investment income in fiscal year twenty five than we budgeted for fiscal year twenty four or fiscal year.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I'll just make kind of a comment. Thank you. And I want to reiterate what Katie said, that this isn't coming from the taxpayer, that we overtaxed or anything like that. I want to make that clear. It was great investment, just people had to look at, and I can understand. How they might see it that way, but again, I agree with my colleagues that. You and Lisa do a fantastic job in the finance department.
Well, thanks. I, I look at it as a, you know, it's money that comes in, it will benefit. The future taxpayer. I mean, it's, it's a, it will reduce, it will reduce the tax burden to somebody somewhere.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. You did a great job with this presentation, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right. Item number eight point five on our agenda is consideration of a resolution to remove Jody Coleman Marziale from the Historic District Commission per section. C five dash two, subsection three of the Talon Town Charter and setting of a public hearing for May twenty first, twenty twenty four, and notice to be given to Joe Coleman Marziale.
Thank you. Town Council last meeting expressed interest in evaluating membership makeup to historic district commission. The, basically, a lot of complaints, in a nutshell, are centered around professionalism and decorum. For the reasons of removal for Ms. Coleman Marziale. Lack of professionalism and decorum difficulties following procedure being disrespectful to residents during HCC meeting is displaying a lack of impartiality. During HCC meeting proceedings.
Thank you. And can you just walk us through some process here? What is before us and what are we thinking?
Sure, we're, we're going to discuss whether or not you want to move forward with the resolution, which is attached at the back here. I believe, when I counsel, I have seen.
Yes, on page fifty nine.
Thank you. This is the consideration of a draft resolution. And basically, so I'll, I'll read the entire thing. Consideration of a resolution to remove Jody Coleman Marziale from the Historic District Commission per section. C five dash two Talon Town Charter and the setting of a public hearing for May twenty first, twenty twenty four, and that notice be given to Jody Coleman Marziale. Motion that the following resolution be introduced and set down for a public hearing on May twenty first, twenty twenty four at seven P M. In Talon Town Council chambers or through Zoom. The draft resolution be resolved that the Talon Town Council will give notice hereby, to hereby remove Jody Coleman. Hold on, let me start again. Be resolved that the Talon County Council with notice given hereby remove Jody Coleman Marziale from the Historic District Commission. Per section C five dash two, open parentheses, triple I, closed parentheses. Of the Talon Town Charter for the following reasons. Occurrences of lack of professionalism and decorum. Difficulties following procedure being disrespectful to residents during HCC meetings, displaying lack of impartiality during HCC meeting proceedings. This removal is effective the date of swearing in of the replacement. Of Historic District Commission members, and that's, that's what's to be considered. And if you look at C five dash two. For this type of thing, the town council needs any reason. As it's defined.
Sure. And are, does this resolution? Or move? This member from the Historic District Commission, like, are we voting on that tonight?
I'm sorry, no, you are not. This is just to move forward with a hearing.
Okay.
And then following that hearing, we consider a moment.
Okay, so we're, the motion before us is to introduce this.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Yep.
And that we would have a public hearing at a future date. Where this resolution would be considered at a public hearing. And then if we chose to move forward, we could vote one way or the other on this resolution.
You left out, we would serve for a moment, we would have notice served to Timbault.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
So I certainly have a comment that I will make, but I just, I, if you're comfortable, I'd like you to maybe offer a comment because you're on. That commission, some of your own thoughts first, maybe.
So we're not voting on any changes to the commission at tonight. Tonight, we're voting to set a public hearing. For a future date. And at that hearing, at that public hearing, we would allow public comment like we do in any normal public hearing. And then there would be council discussion about the actual action we might or might not take. So we're not taking action tonight. Tonight is simply a procedural motion to set the public hearing.
But we wouldn't make any comments. Tonight that might put a halt to that or put, put that motion. Wouldn't be any comments that could be made.
You can, you, we are, we are considering this resolution to, to do these things right now, so you could certainly comment if, if you wanted to. If you're asking me to comment.
No, asking if you think that this would be the time to offer that comment.
Sure, you, you certainly, you certainly can. I would. I don't want to stop you. You, you can comment on that. It is relevant and germane to what we're talking about.
Okay, so I just, I wanted to say something quickly. I. Own a historic property here in town. I bought a eighteen seventies farmhouse that has a original silk mill on its property that's still standing. The silk mill itself. Is one of the only functioning structures still besides a site of dock, even though which is in much better shape than mine. That being said. I'm a big history guy. I love, I love history and what's been done in this town. The federal and Victorian architecture that's present here on the town green that's been preserved over the years is appreciated. You know, the district's significant characteristics for the landscape qualities. The Hicksterns Family Museum, the old county jail. The old courthouse, the historic congregational church, the old town hall and the present town hall that we're in. And other structures that have not been mentioned, which, which I'm sure there are many. That being said, I, I just. I, I, I wouldn't imagine us to be in a position where we're, we're talking about removing. People as distinguished as, as yourself, Joey and. Mrs. Bach. That being said, I, I can't imagine a world where residents would be in a position to be emailing us with such bourbon opinions. On feeling outcast or outnumbered or even trampled in discussion with. For things like solar. That being said, I have my own views on how solar looks in historic district. But I also have my own views on keeping Talon period appropriate. I frequent Sturbridge Village all the time. For Mrs. Bach and yourself, Jody, I, to keep Talon Green. In the timeframe of Sturbridge Village, I'm not sure how that would be done, but it's certainly not what we have here with the aforementioned. Electric, above ground, electric poles and asphalt shingles. So I myself find myself perplexed as to where the line is and where it goes and who makes the call. Also, being able to effectively communicate. Within those intricacies, I, I understand are difficult, and you ladies have been at it for a while. But I, I think. Things certainly could improve in many ways from, from what I've heard. I think I'm out of the purview of the historic district. I don't know. I don't know if I want to ask if I am or not. My house, like I said, is, is off of the green, but is historic property in town nonetheless, so. Those are some of my thoughts going forward. This is something that's very near and dear to my heart. I'm very much connected with other individuals like Celeste and Pat Soucy in town. Just through our efforts of homesteading and being present on town green farmers markets, et cetera. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, and, and some of the comments on public participation alluded to this. Which was, you know, why we're currently at this process and, and considering a hearing versus. You know, perhaps a more informal means of addressing the situation. So I was wondering. You know, Brian, we could touch a bit upon some of the actions that tried to, we take before this point to. Addressing our residents' concerns and, and some of the concerns upon that commission. I think it's important that. That's, that's on the record.
Yes, well, first, we, we did have an F O I. Here, or education class here recently, and I, and I believe Jody did attend that. Second. Let me preface all this with. I have great appreciation for the work that all the volunteers and all our commissions do. And certainly for what. Ms. Coleman Marziale and Mrs. Bach have done here for the town should be recognized. For everything they've accomplished here for a long, long time. That being said, there are a lot of problems that we've tried to negotiate in good faith out of. We've tried to have communication. It was said in the public hearing here. Quoting him directly, Ms. Coleman Marziale said that I intimidated her. Manipulated, I can't remember if it was bullied or something like that into, who did submitting, actually her submitting as the president. Or I'm sorry, as, as the chair of the HDC, a plan for us, the town to move forward in the green, which of course was retracted. And apparently somehow I manipulated her into submitting that to us in the town. That being said. We've talked to her about. Decorum and professionalism. It likely goes much beyond that. Jacob, we have commission members leaving, have left the commission recently. I did exit, exit interviews with both and. There, there are, there are so many more issues. This comes down to confidence the town has in us, as a government as a whole. As the Historic District Commission is a arm of our town government here. And. We want generally. People to appreciate and welcome our commissions for the work that they do here. And for every other commission in town, I'd say we have that. Absent this. So I'm sorry, can you let me speak, sir? Thanks. So we've tried different things to, to communicate, to, to bring about change. Once we started to engage there, we started to realize there's just a lot more to this, and it's, you know, we thank them for everything they've done. But it's a culture change that I've, that I believe, but I don't have a single vote in this. In this process at all, of a vote. But I, I believe personally, as, as a resident and as town manager, it's what's best for the town. We've incurred expenses as a result of the solar decisions that were made. We have one member that said publicly on the record, I'm morally against solar, period. That's problematic, and we hired an attorney to mitigate us through that, unfortunately. So, so there's, there's a lot of deep rooted issues here, I believe, and so did the last council and this council. Hopefully, you guys gave a good consideration to move on.
Thank you. I guess, since you touched on it, one other clarifying question. So. And Mr. Rubino did a decent job explaining about it, but I'll just go back to that point. As far as certificate of appropriateness go, particularly in relation to solar. There's strict, or some of the strict guidelines that are out statute that must be followed correctly.
I, it depends on your definition of strict, but there are certainly guidelines that have to be followed. Yes.
Yes, it's not, it's not a matter of opinion would be, would be correct. It's not.
They should not be in X and Y. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just ask a procedural question? So on the. Twenty, May twenty first, or when, if, if should we vote to hold the public hearing? For the benefit of residents, you know, will we, will, will there be information presented? will there be information presented about like the, the reasons for which, you know, even though we've alluded to them here, that, that we would be considering removal? And similarly, will Ms. Coleman Marziale and Ms. Bach have the opportunity to respond and present any information that they would like to for our consideration?
It would be a public hearing. So similar to the public hearing that we held earlier tonight, there is an opportunity for members of the public to speak at that hearing. I think that we as a council could ask the town manager to prepare information ahead of time, and it would be published in the packet so that members of the public were, any, you know, members of the public would have the opportunity to speak on the materials that was, that would be presented or no surprises, right? Like it would be publicly presented in our packet, published ahead of time, and members of the public would have the opportunity to speak, including, you know, Ms. Coleman Marziale, or if we report with the next person, or Bach.
Okay, thank you.
Is that right, Brian, am I?
Yes.
There are more questions?
I just wanted a procedural question, I guess, or whatever. There's two different, there's one for, there's two different.
Yeah.
We've been this together.
There are two different votes before us. It would be, each, each would get their, an individual public hearing. Perhaps on the same night, but it would be, they would be procedurally separate and distinct.
I agree with some of the things that Alex says. It's sitting here making these decisions are not easy ones. So the years I've gone here in town, it's just unfortunate that we've come to this point. I've watched all, most of those meetings. And there definitely is behavior issues that I saw happen on council, I would ask that to attention too. So I do think, you know, I, I still don't know how I'm going to vote, but I do recognize there are issues on that commission. And I asked last meeting, Katie, and you gave an outline of all the steps, I think Brian needed to, to, to the that you tried to do. No comment. And I just want to make sure of the two stuff where I get enough grouped together.
Brian, just, just again, a few, a few questions about how we got here. Has there been documentation on conducting public meetings as authored by our counselor provided to Ms. Coleman Marziale?
Yes. I believe so.
Has there been o- offers of training on procedure offered to Ms. Coleman Marziale?
Correct.
And if someone wanted to see the same things that we've been referring to tonight, there, are there videos available on the town website for anyone to go online and look at?
Yes, the, the hearings have all been recorded since COVID, I believe, at least audio. And then video, I believe, of the last year or so more are available on there for anyone in town. Just go on and look and, and draw your own conclusions.
Is there any? Are we being asked to consider anything that is not part of the public record?
No.
So everything that we would be considering is, is included in public record, whether it's video or minutes or other meetings, maybe town council meetings?
Yes, or emails sent, communication sent to town council.
So there's nothing, nothing that's not public already before even today?
Fine, I am sure there is, but not anything that we're going to use in these proceedings.
Okay. And I just want to, again, I, you know, I love procedure here. Just want to make sure that we're that the, the motion that we're going to make tonight would be to to, we'd be introducing a motion to set a public hearing to provide notice to Ms. Coleman Marziale of that hearing. And the resolution that we would consider as part of that hearing is what's listed in our agenda as eight point five.
Yes, Chair.
That's what, that's what we're doing.
Yes, Chair.
Okay. We talk about the date of this public hearing. We don't have a regular town council meeting scheduled for May twenty-first. That's a, that's, I think, the third.
The day.
Tuesday.
It's May twenty-seventh, isn't it?
Twenty-first. Twenty-first.
That's a Tuesday.
Yeah, that's the third Tuesday in May. I just, I think that, that we have a conflict on that date. So we were hoping to pick a, a different date. Is there any reason why we couldn't, before we vote, choose a different date for that?
You're asking if, if before you vote, choose a different date? No, we could amend the resolution.
Okay, all right. One of the dates we were talking about was May sixteenth.
Works for me. Um, we do a, by our house. Right there, there would just need to picture.
Yeah, I know. Especially with people with disabilities, but okay, if I have to.
Does that work, May sixteenth, what do you?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Sorry, yes.
Does it work for you, Alex?
Usually for Thursdays for me is either veterans or conservation, but I'm sure that I can catch up.
So you come here and said?
Yes.
Okay. Jacob, I, I'd ask you, that, you don't, right now, obviously, but if you could reach out to Joe to make sure that, that date also worked for him. So I, I guess then, is there any other discussion before we make a consider, make a motion? There would be time after we make the motion to, just to clarify. Okay, so then is there a motion to, for the following resolution, for the resolution to be introduced as drafted to set down for a public hearing on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven PM in Talon Town Council chambers or through Zoom, to provide notice to Ms. Dolman, Ms. Jody Coleman Marziale, excuse me, and for consider, for at that public hearing to consider the resolution as it is outlined in our agenda item eight point five. Is there a motion?
So I'll make the motion.
There's a second?
Second.
Did you get that? We're good? Okay, any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Say, you know, I don't find this process enjoyable at all. That brings some, some good change on that board. That's it. Yeah.
Thank you. And, and at Counselor Udichek's request, we'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Udichek?
Nay.
I just wanted to say, this needs, this process and this commission needs to have a symbiotic relationship. And however that's discovered going forward is, is up to us. So I say, aye. And I, I hope that can be done.
Hi.
Aye.
I'm also a, yeah, I, so that motion passes. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a resolution to remove Kathleen W. Bach from the Historic District Commission per section C five dash two, subsection I, three of the Talon Town Charter and setting up a public hearing for May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and notice to be given to Kathleen W. Bach.
Thank you, Chair. Town Council, the last meeting expressed interest in evaluating the membership of the Historic District Commission, which has resulted in significant numerous complaints received from residents regarding professionalism and decorum, as well as commission meeting attendance. The reason for removal for Kathleen Bach are occurrences of lack of professionalism and decorum, difficulties following procedure, being disrespectful to residents of the HTC, despairing, displaying a lack of impartiality during HTC meetings and issues with attendance. I will read the draft resolution as I did on the previous agenda item. This is consideration of a resolution to remove Kathy Kathleen W. Bach from the Historic District Commission per section C five dash two, open parentheses, triple I, closed parentheses, of the Talon Town Charter and the setting of a public hearing for May, amended to what you have in your package, sixteenth. I'm assuming you want to do both in the same night. May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and notice given, and, and notice be given to Kathleen W. Bach. Motion that the following resolution be introduced and set down for a public hearing on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four at seven PM in Talon Town Council chambers through Zoom. Draft resolution is to be resolved at the Talon Town Council with notice given hereby remove Kathleen W. Bach from the Historic District Commission per section C five dash two, open parentheses, triple I, closed parentheses, of the Talon Town Charter for the following reasons. Occurrences of lack of professionalism, decorum, difficulties following procedure, being disrespectful to residents during HTC meetings, displaying a lack of impartiality during HTC meeting proceedings, and issues with meeting attendance. This removal is effective the date of swearing in of the replacement of the Historic District members.
Any questions or comments at this point?
I would just say. It's so very.
Town managers, as my questions were on the last one, is anything that's going to be discussed? Or any of the considerations that are being taken into account outside of the public record?
No.
Everything's public?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions? So this would be the same night on May sixteen, seven PM, here in chambers, and through Zoom.
And we would follow the same procedure. This, yes.
They would talk about earlier. Two distincts.
Correct. The way it would roll with the procedure for the second would follow, mirror the procedure for the first.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, so.
I just wonder, I, I would hope you're going forward. We would have distinct, a distinct understanding of what those missteps were. If more, what's, things that were set forward. I think that would make a better informed decision rather than what we have as knowledge so far.
Then you'll get that. This is a very difficult.
And, and the differences between both Jody and Mrs. Bach.
Sure.
I think that those are important as well.
Sure.
Yeah. Sorry, no, I, I would agree with, especially with the differences between the two places. I think they definitely needs to be, you know, made clear specifically before sort of outreach.
Your question. So any other questions? So just again, to clarify, the motion before us is to set a public hearing on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven PM, Talon Town Council chambers or through Zoom for consideration of removal of Kathleen W. Bach from the Historic District Commission and notifying her. And at that hearing, we would consider the resolution that is in our packet. So this motion that we may or may not make would mirror the previous motion. Same motion, different person, that's all. Okay? There, there, the draft resolution is slightly, I just, I guess I should differentiate. The draft resolution does have slightly different words in it, but we're going through the same process. Okay, any questions? Am I sure everybody understands? Okay. So is there someone who would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've been requested to do a roll call vote. Counselor Udichek? By Chair Murray?
Aye.
Counselor Nune?
Aye.
Counselor Butler?
Aye.
Counselor Murray?
Aye.
I'm also an I, and that motion passes. Thank you. Item eight point seven on our agenda is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards or commissions, which we have done tonight. Item nine on our agenda is old business, which we have done. Item ten is reported to town manager.
Thank you. In relation to our public safety consultant study that we, that we agreed to move forward with, the cost was about forty-four thousand, we had, or forty-five thousand, we had allotted thirty thousand, so the remaining fourteen nine ninety-five. We found an attrition savings out of public safety. And so we, that's where we got the funding from, and we're in the process now of finalizing the contract and timeline and keep you updated through that entire process. It's nothing new to most of the staff in public, public safety and town staff here in going through these types of things. Our DPW director, Lappin, today has attended a ADA self-assessment course. So he's, he can do self-assessments on our town buildings and sidewalks. Should a resident want to take her, her wheelchair around the town property and town buildings, they would be able to do that. I want, I want the town to take note of the positive things happening at Crandles. The Lily Crandall side, as I referred to Lionsfield side, is coming along thanks to DPW. They cleared probably another thirty yards of waterfront. If you're facing Crandles from Lionsfield to the right side, I drove by today, it was as busy as I've ever seen that park. I couldn't be happier with what they're doing, but moreover, they brought in a lot more sand, reclaimed a lot more beach area. We will have the dock out again. The re, they rebuilt the ADA, they didn't rebuild it. They, they were, they needed some minor repair. They took care of that, working with both with Parks and Rec Director Bruce Wa and Scott Lappin and his staff. We're just making a lot of progress. There has been some damage over to the pavilion area, kids and such, and the lodge. We have a remote camera set up to which we've already achieved some success, and we'll work through that. But we'll, we'll keep, that camera was, is proving to be a good investment, very small, but a good investment for us. Public Works has entered, will enter in, in, what, May fifth? Is it, they say, May sixth, they'll start their summer hours with their summer help coming in. As far as Little League, they, they have, their dugouts are in. That was through ARCA, something we got through ARCA, and a lot of changes for softball and the, the Little League. And so the, the dugouts are there up at Harren Cove, if you want to go look at them. The youth theater auditions start, we had fifty kids come and apply for that, which is more than we, we've had. And so the promotion of, I think, is going well, and, and it's just such a great thing. Our, our primary election went very well, working with Mr. Wyman. We might be putting in for some grant funding, we're already adding a new phone line, he'd like a door, put in one of the rooms, maybe we'll call it the Mike Wyman Memorial Doorway. But we're, we're looking at all that, and we can do it to make it easier. The, the, I can't imagine, we're lucky to have the infrastructure we have here in this building to handle the early voting. Other towns, I'm sure, are struggling with how they're going to get through this. But we're very lucky to have our registrars, both our full-time and our assistant registrars are, are just very, very good to us. Um. We're hiring a new circulation clerk. We lost one. One left for a full time job with benefits. Ours is nineteen hours. So we're in the process. We did some interviews today. We are desperately in need of lifeguards uh for Crandall's. Uh, we do hope that the 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 new positive light that we're shining on Crandall's and and such would help us attract some kids in town to go work there. Um, it's had started to look rundown for years, so we're just kind of hoping the whole new positive vibes around it help and what I'll work to promote that as well. Uh, there was a dinner tonight at the at the uh senior center for all the volunteers that work at the senior center. They threw dinner for them. That was uh successful. Uh, while we're on the senior center, Katie and I presented the budget uh to the seniors last week. That went uh very well. Um, we'll start our kayak loner program, which was we got through a grant and then uh we'll look to to start donating those out again. Um, Mr. Khan talked about an uh investigation in regards to a larceny at his business uh down the street. Uh, I sniffed around it a bit. Um, the the trooper that has it has been off the last couple of days. He comes back tomorrow. That being said, if you don't make an arrest within the first twenty four hours and a warrant can take some time to make its way through the prosecutor's office, through the channels and and back out to be there. So I I understand his frustration. Uh, but if you don't make a speedy arrest there, as I'm sure the counselor across is familiar with, um, you got to go through an arrest warrant process. Uh, to elaborate a little bit more on what we did on Arca today, um, and thanks to the uh the chair, uh you to check for for that and and also Jacob for your help there. Uh, the liners for the the rink and we'll get into this when it comes to both. But the liners for the rink get damaged with hockey pucks and skates. One of the options we have and ask sticks too is to say no pucks and sticks, which would not go over very well. Um, you could put hay bales and to protect the sides and that ice surface is small already and the mess that the hay bales would bring to the ice. Um, we've looked at any options of hanging canvas or tarp's over or we still may do that. Uh, that being said, um, we have tape to repair liners, but there's only so much you can do when we need them to hold water. So it was a cheap um couple, a couple thousand dollars. So we have some sustainability of this um rink. Should should a liner fail that we have some others in held uh in storage and that we can use down the road. I I estimate hopefully it lasts eight to ten years. Um, depending on the usage, the weather, et cetera, the ability to repair it. There's a lot there. The aerator for the pond uh that we're going to be asking uh council for approval for, this is about water quality. It will have a visual um positive visual effect in that it's a looks like a fountain, but really it's about air iteration and improving the uh the aqua life in there and green, I don't know, marine life, the aquatic life in there as well as the clarity and flimminess of the water. Uh, and if any of us that grew up in Crandall's know that a narrator would be welcome uh there. I met with the leadership of the Veterans Recognition Commission and I did pop in their meeting last week. Uh, it's nice to see Alex, of course, working with them uh very hard. Uh, they presented plans for their um uh disabled veterans accessible uh Veterans Memorial here on the green. They presented a plan. Um, you know, we kind of gave them a loose budget tied in with the uh budget for the sidewalks and they came in under that. Um, so we're we're very grateful for them. Um, obviously, it's it's going to be held in abeyance, likely absent any sort of direction from uh anyone collaborative people saying to go ahead and move forward with the project that's being held in the balance as we uh make our way through uh litigation. That's all I have. Thanks.
Any questions for town manager? Excuse me. I don't know, Jen, you have any questions?
I have a, and now, I mean, you can go ahead.
You sure?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Did you touch base? I know we talked about um Arca, but the uh facilities that Scott's working on.
Oh, I did not. Uh, sorry. So the Parks Garage Facility, which I I I fingers crossed Scott's good at it and coming in under a budget again, hopefully, which maybe gets us more money down the road. That being said, that uh project is well underway. Um, I drove by last Friday, uh just happened to see the engineer um out wandered around the property and I got out and walked with him uh and talked about the project. So um Scott's very confident in the timelines uh in his in his process to get this uh building up and out. Uh, so that's where we are.
Any other questions? The you mentioned the issue that Mr. Khan brought up during Calacama. Is that being handled by the residency trooper or by troops?
Technically, it's assigned to a resident state trooper.
Okay.
My guess is it is within his wrath to uh investigate and should probable cause exist.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
Since I got called out. So I don't I don't work for the state attorney's office, but um I do work out of Raffles Superior Court and I'm familiar with the process and I can tell you that the state attorney is a talent resident. Um, he takes these kinds of things very seriously. I'm in defense. I mean, I can tell you right now, there's no shortage of warrants being signed. I see them firsthand, walking down the hallway and the judges are very busy. Again, I don't have firsthand knowledge, but I would assume if something hasn't been done as of yet, there's a very good reason for it. I don't think there's any reason the public should be concerned at this point. I'm sure that they're doing their very best to get the process going and as quickly as possible.
Good. Thank you. All right, without any more comments, um we are on to adoption of minutes and in our budget, uh I'm sorry, in our meeting packet. We have a very robust uh set of minutes uh for five meetings. Uh, the mark, I'm sorry, the April second, twenty twenty four budget uh public hearing. Then April fourth, twenty twenty four budget meeting. The April ninth, twenty twenty four special meeting, April ninth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. And the April seventeenth, twenty twenty four annual budget meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
All five of those. That's all that I just be quick. Okay, is there a second?
Sorry.
Say goodbye, Alex. Is there any discussion about the five sets of meeting minutes we are? Yes.
I just want to thank you. We've uh we've had a lot of meetings recently and I appreciate you uh being at them and taking um good notes over good minutes. So thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the motion before us is to approve minutes. All five of those is all in favor? That's all of those. Thank you. Uh, next item twelve is response counsel. Now for your agenda.
Yes, so here we go. So we got one for your request on um talent star starting district emails. Um, I've already expressed disappointment at the April fourth budget meeting. We got a uh email regarding solar panels in every school, electric fleet, city vehicles. And other things to E B charters. Um, writer supports the removal of Kathy Bach and Julie Coleman, Marzia, Marzia, sorry, Julie. I said your last name wrong. Um, and and also reaching out to support uh the town historic districts attempt to preserve the historic look on the green. Um, writer is concerned that the chair of the town historic district was solicited solicited comments from neighbors. And a writer was, uh, another writer was concerned about um that you're two saying to Mrs. Coleman soliciting neighbors. And um would like Miss Bach and um Mrs. Marziano removed because of their behavior. Uh, one writer does not want um Mrs. Bach being removed. And I think this one, Joe, this came to us, but it was um the chair of the historic district committee wanted some minutes corrected on the April ninth. I don't know what we do with that. What Brian, do we think I don't know how that's corrected with their meeting? That's something you can check with the town clerk.
You check the town clerk on it.
Okay. Um, then a letter in support of town council's special meeting on um on eight point five. Um, another letter in support of eight point five as well. Yep. And then a student concerned about uh losing a librarian at Talon High School, and I apologize, I think I did miss one right at the top. Um, the writer was, I'm disappointed about Board of Education budget cut. Yes, sorry, the writer was disappointed that the Board of Education budget was reduced by four hundred thousand dollars. I think I have them all up to date. If any council if I missed one, let me know a quarter foot for public now.
Thank you. The next item, excuse me, on our agenda is item fifteen, the Chairperson's report. Um, I did just, excuse me, wanted to uh thank the um senior center staff and volunteers um for their support during the budget presentation uh last last week. I think it was last week. Um, I'd also want to thank the town manager and Dr. Will for attending that to answer the questions that were asked of us at that presentation. I I thought it was enjoyable to go in front of uh the senior center, so uh I hope we continue that thing is good thing to do. Uh, just to, excuse me, to remind everyone, uh, the budget referendum is uh Tuesday, May seventh, which is before our next town council meeting. Um, so uh polls are uh the everyone votes at the library program room for the budget referendum Tuesday, May seventh. Both uh oh, the polls are open from six A M. until eight P M. There is no early voting for this, um, but you can vote absentee if you qualify. Um, and you can pick up an absentee ballot application from the town clerk, call the town clerk's office or call the registrars, help you with that. Um. I wanted to uh thank my vice chair who uh put together an email uh regarding the deep connected communities grant program. This is the one you put together, right, Jacob? Yeah, thank you for that. So um and then to ask the council, um, the state of Connecticut has established a communities grant program to fund broadband to underserved areas and the town um Comcast is going to submit an application and we'd like to write or sign a letter of support for Comcast's application. Uh, they provided critical services during COVID. Um, we use utilize that for remote learning for some of our students for remote work for some of our workers. And um we would like to support their application. Uh, is there is there any objection? Does anybody have any objection to Jacob and I signing this letter to support Comcast's application? We can bring it back into a formal town council item if there's objection or we want to discuss it more. No, okay. So uh Jacob and I will go ahead and sign that. Thank you very much. Um. I also uh attended with the town manager and uh Council Moran, the ribbon cutting, uh which was uh for the new business that opened in Gilso Commons, uh the butter and uh the Chamber of Commerce attended. There were big scissors and a ribbon and the scissors actually worked. Um, we got a tour of the facility on the inside. Um, we do understand that that facility has been uh fully certified per lots and lots of state uh requirements, um that Troop C has been there, uh that our resident state troopers have been there, um and that the business is is open and operational at this point. I think those were the items for my chairperson's report. No, I one more. Uh, I am sorry, sorry. It's getting late and I'm tired. Uh, I did hold my chair hour um two weeks ago tonight on April eleventh. I did mention this at our last council meeting. Uh, I was joined at that uh meeting. As you know, I've been inviting chairs of various boards and commissions to attend these chair hours with me. Um, so at this meeting, uh Chairperson from Coleman, Chairman Coleman Marziallo from the historic district commission joined me. Um, Chairman Susie from uh permanent celebration committee joined, um and uh Chairperson Tony Holtz was also there. Uh, we did have, I think, uh four residents who attended, so uh we had a robust conversation. Um, these meetings have been going very nicely uh in the library. Um, and it's been really wonderful to get to know some of the chair people of different boards and commissions during this process. Um, and to sometimes we have very uh informal conversations about things that are happening in town. Sometimes they're uh more specific to specific town council or planning zoning or particular subject matters, but um these have been enjoyable. These are public meetings, so obviously you guys are, I know more meetings fun, but you're always welcome to join. Um, right now, my next meeting was going to be on May sixteenth, but because of the public hearing we just scheduled, I will reschedule that uh to a different date and um I'll get in touch with the town manager office to make sure I I get that on. So that's it for me. That that's my, that's for me. Uh, next is communications and petitions from council persons.
Something um so a while back ago, we had um a meeting on contaminated wells issue. Um, I remember this January or something. One thing um that had been brought up for that meeting. I would be interested in seeing if we could pursue was um potentially working on like a passable road ordinance. Um, I didn't know if there had been any momentum on that issue or if that had been discussed at all, but something I would definitely like to um maybe get a working group together to put in draft and submit for that. That's all. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it's like my favorite part. So I was glad to hear all the affirmations tonight. It's always nice to recognize a community um in various ways. Um, I did deliver um events, whatever you want to call it, over to Talon and then TN Mutual Aid Office across the street. Um, they were very happy and I know they posted something on Facebook too and they referred that there. They appreciate the partnership that they have with leadership in the town, so just those small things do go a long way too. So I just wanted to mention that. Next week I plan to deliver stuff to the town fire department because they have um international firefighters. Um, day, I think it's May fourth or fifth, so I'll be doing that next week. Um, on behalf of the council, I think I will have a new business going. Anyways, um, and then I want to thank Ryan and Jacob for letting me know that it may might be a um potential meeting regarding a bond ratings and stuff and how we go below a certain number. Um, you know, with those new standings. Thank you.
We are at item uh fifteen, which is public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with three minute limit. Um, we will um as we always do, uh alternate between the room and the virtual room. Um, we would ask you to come up to the table and give us your name and address. And Mr.?
Uh, once again, and last time tonight for all of us. Um, so Dennis Deegan, six eight nine, Talon Stage Road. Um, I really don't know what all of you were listening to tonight in terms of what was presented to you to you about uh eight point five and six, okay? Um, I heard attorneys say that you're violating um the charter of this town by the process you put in place. I never heard any of you ask Mr. Foley if anyone had checked with your attorney to see if that was true, okay? Right off the bat, that's a deal breaker. You know, I ran a company and if I ran a company where there's councils being run, we would have had our butt sued, I don't know how many times, okay? You got to think about what's going on. You had an individual come up here and tell you and laid out the facts of what she requested for help and never got. Did I hear any facts coming from the town manager as to no, she didn't do that? No, 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 nothing, okay? Candidly, I'm not an attorney and I never wanted to be one. However, most of what you heard tonight was hearsay information in terms of a legal proceeding, not that this is, okay? But it's hearsay, okay? But it's hearsay, okay? You have individuals that give you facts and you ignore them, and then you go ahead and make decisions, okay? Candidly, the reality is, these are two very different situations between Mrs. Bach and Mrs. Coleman, okay? Two very different situations. At the same time, your Town Manager and Mrs. Coleman have never gotten along, okay? They can't stand each other. That's the reality of, okay? Because they're two very different people. Okay, the Town Manager takes an approach and a value to life into how he does his job. It's very dictatorial, okay? And he wants people to be submissive, very consistent with his prior life, quite honestly, and that's how he acts. I've been in Town Hall. You should see how he acts, all right? It's really pathetic.
Mr. Deegan, please, we have rules of procedure about decorum here, and I would ask that you not-
I didn't call his name, I said Town Manager.
That is correct. We were specifically talking about someone, and the rules of procedure do-
So I'll move on, okay? So the reality is that the cultural change that the Town Manager called for in a couple of meetings has to do with taking an authoritative approach in basically a top-down, you agree with me, it's tribalism. You agree with me, or you're gone, okay? So that's what the council now represents, and that's the culture you want in this town, you're going to get, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I think Claudette Morehouse was first on the list. I apologize if I got that wrong, but everyone will have a chance to speak. We'll go with Claudette first.
Good evening, Claudette Morehouse, 89 Merlot Way. I can't agree with Mr. Deegan anymore. I find it, first, I want to thank Colleen for her no vote, not to, not to pursue the hearing. These two ladies have volunteered a lot of time, effort, into the history of our town, and keeping it that way. And I find it very ironic that this council is sitting in judgment after a six-hour, very disrespectful meeting that our Chairperson headed. I ask her to recuse herself from any vote or any hearing, because I feel like she has, she has done the same exact thing. I don't think it would be fair for her or the whole council, for that matter, to sit in judgment. Maybe you need to clean your own house. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we go back to the room? Yes.
I just wanted to say Jody Coleman Marzialo-
Sorry, Jody, I don't, I don't need to interrupt you, but can we just make sure that the last perspective is muted? So we don't interrupt Ms. Coleman Marzialo. Thank you, I just didn't want to interrupt.
Thank you. Jody Coleman Marzialo, 79 Talon Green. As far as my amending to the meeting minutes, Lisa, I appreciate everything you do. It's just, you wrote "whack," and I said "lie." That's it. One more, one more. That's it. I listened to the recording. So, and I would have, I was disappointed Chair that you didn't have the opportunity to read our meeting minutes from our public hearing for the United Congregational Church, where we just approved 120 new solar panels on the building. So for anybody to say that we're arbitrary, or I'm biased, or I'm non-impartial, it is not true. It really is. I personally have solar panels on another property that I own. I like them. I think they work magically. As far as 95 Talon Green goes, they wanted 32 panels. We asked them to relocate them. They got 29 with a possibility of three more. However, they filed an appeal. So talk about a lawsuit where they're asking for 32, they probably can have 32. Doesn't really seem like it makes that much sense to me, and the majority of the letters about conduct and decorum have come from that address. So I just wanted to say that we are not against solar panels in any way, shape, or form. We are just against an overwhelming amount of visibility in a nationally registered historic place. We also follow the Secretary of Interior guidelines because we are on the national registry. That's why we have the link on our webpage, and that's why I've asked for three additional resources of public information to be added also back almost a month ago now, and I've had no action. I'm not quite sure why. I'm just trying to have public information provide to the public on energy efficiency. As I said in my letter, I spent over an hour and a half at Earthlight down in Ellington to try to educate and inform myself on all the new technology of these solar systems. There's ones with solar lines, there's ones with black polka dots, they're all different. I went out of my way, drove my own car, and went there to talk to these people. I also went all the way to Weathersfield to talk to their Historic District, where they have, are the largest Historic District in the whole state of Connecticut. I also talked to the Director, Associate Director of Planning and Development, Tom Sealy, in the town of Windsor about their solar installations. And I also reached out to Mea Chester and spoke to Attorney Stephen Penny, who is on the Silk, is on the Historic District Commission, the Silk thing, whatever. I can't remember the name of it. It's the Cheney Mills where, where they have all that beautiful historic property, about solar panels as well, and what are they doing in their town as well? I do know they have them on other schools. We don't. The town, the superintendent did a proposal in November of 2022. I'm not quite sure why we don't have. I don't know why anybody isn't saying maybe we should put them on the firehouses that we're making. You know, if the town is so gung ho about solar, why aren't we putting it on any of our town-owned buildings? Instead, you're giving me a hard time because I'm trying to keep visibility at a minimum, which is exactly what the federal guidelines say, found as a link on my webpage. It says, number one, put them on back additions, new, nonhistoric properties, or outbuildings. That's exactly what we asked the Hugheses to do. They have brand-new outbuildings that are nonhistoric and a new addition off the back. That's what they were supposed to do first, before they came to us, because that's what the guidelines say, and John Hughes should know it because he's on this commission. We have three separate things that we follow: town, state, and town. And we have to meet a lot of criteria to get where we are today, including our designated scenic road. So please, check your facts and stop listening to, listening to people's opinions because they're not happy with what they got. We've always made a compromise, always. There are going to be now four properties in the Historic District that are going to have solar panels on them, which is a bigger percentage as far as size-wise than the entire town of Talon and the state of Connecticut, if you do the research and check your facts. Okay, and I know a lot of you personally, people have been to my house, they've come to my house trick-or-treating, they've been to my house, I know their parents, and I'm not the kind of person who intentionally insults or is rude or disrespectful to anybody. And if I had the ability to mute my audience, where people weren't constantly yelling all the time, if I had a beautiful minute taker like I had Lisa for years, we could, we could have more of the members focus on the tasks at hand. It's hard to be a voting member and try to take the minutes. Just imagine any one of you sitting right here, taking minutes and trying to control the screen while you're trying to run the meeting and listen to everything that's going. Talk about multitasking. And I've asked repeatedly for this, and I have asked for help running meetings. And this document that you're saying that the town clerk sent out, I never got it. I would like you to forward it to me now, please, because I don't have it. Because if I had it, it would have been really helpful. But nobody even checked or followed up to see if I received it. Nobody said anything about it. The first time I ever heard about it was when you mentioned it. And also, I do know that three, according to all your minutes, three people have sent in letters of interest for the Historic District Commission. I don't know why you're waiting. What's the holdup? You don't like who's applied, or who's sending out a letter? Are you trying to handpick somebody else that you think would be better? I mean, I know there was one person way back in the February minutes that you mentioned that sent in a letter of interest. Why haven't they been appointed yet? Every, every month, I, I mean, this is like two months have gone by now, and there's still nothing, you're not appointing anybody. We have two vacancies. And I assure you, I'm not biased. And if some people just don't like the decisions that we have to make, and they're all regarding solar, because 95 Talon Green has asked for 10 things. They've got doors, windows, fences, harbors, an addition, patio, garage, shed, everything. And I mean, how can, how can they say we're biased and we're negative when we're, in the same with 63 Talon Green? I mean, granted, their house got hit, but I have been asking for lighting, additional two streetlights. Colleen knows from the ARPA files. However, somebody has put it on the hostage list and says pending the sidewalks. They have nothing to do with the sidewalks. They're not going anywhere near where the sidewalks would go. It's an extension down towards the Senior Center and an extension at the intersection where these accidents are happening. We already got a quote. Lisa Hancock did, and so did Scott Lafferty, over a year ago. Actually, it might be almost two years ago now that they've been on the ARPA list. I heard they spent money on a ice skating liner, which we know will definitely be that in the middle of summer, won't we? But how about some lighting for like the parade, Halloween, the fire truck parade that's coming up, people walking on the green? Any kind of that. I mean, I feel like every time I ask for something, I'm pushed to the bottom of the list and never get a response or a reply. I asked several times, and I never hear anything back. Do I, Town Manager? Just ignore me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next online, we have Deb Getz. Yeah, we see that your hand is up. Would you like to speak? Yeah, we'll try Susan Lucy, and we'll come back. Again, everyone will have a chance. Susan, would you unmute, or would you accept the question? Here you go.
Oh, jeez, I just did it again.
Oh, sorry, our bad.
Okay.
There we go. We got it.
Okay, okay. Susan Lucy Hughes, 95 Talon Green. My husband has gone to bed, otherwise I'm sure he would like to respond to that previous little tirade. If that wasn't predisposition, I don't know what is, folks. But the reason I want to speak here tonight is, it sounds like not everyone on the council has read my most recent letter that I did send in from 95 Talon Green after the April 17th meeting that Jody mentioned, the UCCT solar application was approved. I do want to read some of this for the benefit of those who obviously have not had the chance to read it. It was a meeting that brought in an attorney to give the Historic District Commission members some guidance. Apparently, they had gotten together and come up with a list of questions for this attorney mainly regarding decorum and protocol, and how to handle things like questions about historic homes outside of the Historic District that have solar. I mean, so in any case, I want to highlight a point that he clarified very clearly to the commission members, which was solicitating comments, soliciting comments from neighbors and the public is not acceptable, and any commissioner, and these are, this is a quote, "Any commissioner who did that should A, recuse themselves, or B, should not be on the commission at all." And if you listen to the recording of the meeting, the April 17th meeting, you can jump to about 1:15 and listen to that yourselves. Later, when the public hearing was opened and the UCTT Attorney Famiglietti asked specifically if anyone had solicited comments from the public for this application, and Mr. Paquin brought up an email that is included in the April 17th meeting packet, which clearly indicates that the Chair had asked a neighbor for comment about the solar panels on the UCTT application, which I pasted into my letter. Somehow, Jody, the Chair, denied that she had done this. Regardless of the date of that email, or the outcome, which becomes irrelevant because the application was approved, based on the attorney, this is a lawyer, not my opinion, no one's opinion, the lawyer's guidance that the town of Talon taxpayers paid for, assessment of soliciting comments from the public, the Chair should step down from the commission. She had obviously used that tactic repeatedly in the past, which can be seen in multiple meeting packets for public hearings using the same letter as she included in this public hearing on April 17th, as well as the November 29th public hearing on page 58 and 60, and that's just going back a few months. So this is the same meeting that Kathy Bach was asked to recuse herself for bias for making the statement about being morally opposed to solar in the March 15th meeting, which was our solar application and public hearing, which she did not recuse herself for, she voted in that meeting. So just, just so everyone is on the same page here, these are, these are some of the issues. I know I heard a lot of you say how uncomfortable it is. It is very uncomfortable to be on the opposite end, the receiving end, of this kind of behavior, treatment, attitude, constant, constant. I don't even know what to call it. We saw it just now, when Jody went on and on and on and on and on, about us, to you, in a public meeting. It's not appropriate, it's, it's not professional. There is no place for it, and Talon deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to go back to the room, and then we'll go to Deb. If she wishes to speak next, she'd be next. Someone in the room?
Mary Pat Susie, 111 Torrey Road. I'm more disappointed now than I was earlier. And I'm kind of sad that you guys did this vote, but as Susan was just saying about decorum, I never received a town clerk pamphlet either. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether that was actually sent out to all chairs, and I'm the Chair of PCC. So I never received that, and that was part of last, last meeting that they talked about. But I just wanted to sort of say that, you know, Councilman Noonan had asked about making sure that you guys have all the right evidence. I'm less concerned with what they've done in the past couple of videos than I am concerned about the due process of this, because quite frankly, he asked, can we please have all the information for the next meeting, right? You, you actually gave some responses about letters that were received. So this is my FOIA packet that I received, but when I did the math and we added the more letters, again, it's like 17 letters, but there were one person that wrote four of them, one person that wrote two of them. So really, how many people are we talking about here that are making complaints about two people, and you guys are going to decide to remove them? I just, I just don't get that. Where was the mitigation beforehand? Did, did they get pulled in and counseled with people? I mean, I don't know that any of that happened for them, and that's not fair. It's just not fair. I get what Susan Lucy is saying about her treatment. That's probably always been a contentious, a contentious thing, maybe since she moved to the Green, which is a couple of years ago. I feel for her for that, but I just can't get that this is really supposed to happen this way. Forty-four years for Kathy Bach, Jody 15 years. I mean, I, maybe it'll be me next, you know? Maybe I say something wrong. I just don't know, and it's not fair. It's really, really not fair. And I just want you guys to consider every single piece of evidence and compare it-
and compare it and really reflect on whether this is appropriate. If you had done it a different way, pulled them in, counseled them, had a forum, not a public forum, a forum that the charter council calls for, that would have been better. This is not great. But I was pleased. I was very uncomfortable when you guys had to vote. You guys were very uncomfortable. So we're all human, right? And it, and it's not an easy thing. But please, please, please make sure you see every bit of evidence and make your own decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to go with Deb Getz next. Deb?
Yeah, sorry. I don't know what was happening before. It kept telling me to leave the meeting. I didn't want to leave the meeting. I wanted to speak. So this is Deb Getz, 176 Cait Lane. It was interesting to hear Jody's remarks because that was basically what I said at the beginning, that they need more help. They need a clerk. They need more guidance. They need a town staff person. They should be meeting just as you are in a hybrid manner so that you can all be there, the public can be there, and the public can also tune in if they wish to. It leads to a much more efficient, professional meeting. Believe me, I was on PCC for four years during COVID and I can tell you, the in-person hybrid meetings work much more efficiently and professionally. So that's what I want to say about what Jody was saying. She's asked for help. Give her help. Anyone who knows me knows that I do my research before I say anything. That was the one thing on PCC that everyone, no matter party, no matter view on any issue, they all respected me for that. I do my research. So I did my FOIA request to try to find out what the issue was with Kathy Bach. One email, one email said, "If I could suggest, start with temporarily removing the two commissioners who are currently engaged in a lawsuit against the town and the taxpayers who they claim to represent until such time this lawsuit is settled." That is not Kathy Bach's performance on the HTC. That is regarding the lawsuit. I don't agree with the lawsuit. I wouldn't have filed a lawsuit. But I fully support her ability to act on the HTC in an impartial manner. She expressed her opinion on solar panels. We all have personal opinions on every matter before us. She actually verbalized it, but she still made an informed decision based on the facts presented to her and based on the state and local regulations regarding solar. She recused herself from the UCC T application and she approved the Hughes application with modifications that were approved unanimously. So you cannot say that she acted in a biased manner on either of those applications despite her personal views on solar. That's just silly. Now, your, your initial thing says, "Significant and numerous complaints received from residents regarding professionalism and decorum." There was one for Kathy Bach. How in the world do you now subject her to this public hearing and this public humiliation, questioning 44 years of service to the town based on one complaint, one written complaint? If there have been verbal complaints, then you need to document all that. How in the world can the public, 99.99% of us who have no idea what's going on with this, how can we respond at a public hearing when we don't even know what the accusations are? These are all so general, professional, decorum, difficulties following procedure. This is a woman who's been involved in town government for 44 years. I believe she was on the town council at one point. She may have even been the chair. To accuse her of difficulties following procedure, being disrespectful to residents, that's all a matter of opinion. One of the residents said that she actually compared the HTC to an HOA. The horror. Of course, it's very similar. HOAs have rules that they have to follow for their houses, as do HTC's. It's very similar. So it was, it was actually an apt comparison. And she wasn't saying anything negative by that. She was just saying that there are things that they have to consider. I'm sorry. This is outrageous that you are proceeding with a public hearing. I applaud Colleen Udichak for having the courage to say, no, we don't need to go down this road. Work with them. Help them to be the best commission they can be. Don't remove people who have been on the commission for years just because you don't agree with one issue, solar. Solar is a very controversial issue in historic districts. It's new and it's controversial. It doesn't mean that anyone is wrong. They're all trying to do their best. Both applications were approved. That is important. Both were approved. I'm very disappointed that this is going forward and that this is happening. But I also have to say that a public hearing is very different than a formal hearing. Public hearing, person after person gets up to say things. Formal hearing is where the attorney will actually have the right to ask questions of those who are speaking. He will have the opportunity to actually get to the accuracy of what is being presented. You can't just present these vague complaints without actual details. So please, before the public hearing that you are now declaring as a formal hearing, please give the specific complaint. Give us the time in the meetings. The meetings are very long and as I said before, they're very disorganized. So please give us the exact times that we should be listening to where Kathy Bach has violated any of these expectations of what a volunteer should do in a commission meeting. Thank you.
Let me just make sure we're muted. Thank you. Back to the room.
Barbara Vino, 296 Wyegel. I'm just going to make a couple of comments not to preempt May 16. You made a decision to talk about in an objective way, Mr. Noonan. I think you were the guy, very historically, probably the only guy in the room would share my understanding of Donkeyville. You should be careful. You might get tapped in on Historic District Commission. But it's the objective review of the facts. And I think that's what you're going to hear on the 16. Mr. Murray, you're right. This is hard work. This is really hard. Anytime you're discussing matters of personnel, it's tough. It's tough on you. It's tough on the person sitting over here. And it's made doubly tough because per C-5 of our charter, you got to do this in a formal, public setting. There was a comment made earlier about your setting precedent. You're not. In 1996, a council very much like you decided that they were going to fire the town manager. Mr. Polly, relax. The town manager serves at the pleasure of the council. And these are the rules of the game. You appoint commissioners to the Historic District Commission. They serve at your pleasure. You appoint them based on your review of their criteria. And if, as you maybe inherit them from a previous council, it is your option to say they're not aligned with my values or maybe where you're going. That's how it is. That's the rules of the game. In the private sector, as an Atwill employee, you're given a cardboard box. There's no discussion. Thank you very much for coming along. There was also another comment about precedent as if we're setting a chilling tone for volunteerism. I beg to differ. There are a lot of volunteers in this town and they do their work in the interest of the town. So sometimes when you have to make a mid-course correction, an adjustment or realign it, it actually raises the bar of performance of everybody else. It kind of sets a level, a minimum level of acceptable behavior so that all your other volunteers, you guys included, will say, wow, there are consequences. So yes, it is hard work. One last thing. Looking at all of your local vacancies, I think there's probably two or three dozen. I would really encourage you guys to break it up. Go to your town committees, start calling people. People like to be asked to serve. If you're looking for people to raise their hands, it's not going to do. You got to call. Invite. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room?
Ron Lappin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. There are a lot of issues that the town of Talon is addressing, many of which are not necessarily the fault of the town. This is different from that of my own issue, which has been heavily documented and has been determined to be caused by the town's operations. I would love to have an opinion on a variety of other topics in the town, but unfortunately, I have a singular issue that I need to focus on completely because it is so impactful to both myself and my family's life. My hope is that this, that we will see a resolution of the property in the near future, but I would still ask for the town's cooperativeness and expediency in addressing the issue should this new well not result in potable water. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online who would like to speak? Anyone else in the room? Line? Anyone else in the room? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the last item on our agenda, which is adjournment. Is there motion to adjourn? Colleen made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I, I heard Jacob second it. Sorry. Is there any objection to adjournment? Any objection? Any objection to adjournment? Without objection, you're adjourned?